This time we'll call the October 18th meeting of the Wilson County Planning Commission into order. Anyone wishing to give testimony before this board today, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand. I hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth, so help me God, say I do. Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from the September 20th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion of Mr. Weathers, second by Mr. Remphro. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed, that motion will carry. Tom, I assume you want to start with old business?
Yes. We have a deferred item for a convenience market, if you will, at site plan for 10-440 Central Pike at map 99 parcel 72. The attorney for the property owner requests deferral until the November meeting. Mike may be able to tell you a little bit, but they're in negotiations, there's some litigation that's involved that they're trying to settle before they come back.
Okay, you wish to speak to that, Mr. Jennings? Or you just want us to talk?
We defer it, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We defer that case to the November meeting.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Remphro. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed, that motion will carry. And we'll move into the master plan amendment.
So this master plan amendment goes with the rezoning request for the same property, I believe. The master plan amendment is for Logistics Drive 840 LLC at 101 Logistics Drive, 13.18 acres, Wilson County Property Map 138 parcel 34. The applicant, Joe Haddix, representing the property owner, Logistics 840 LLC, has been in talks with staff since the last meeting and his client, and per those talks, the applicant has agreed to remove some of the proposed uses from this request. The request now is to add the following uses: gasoline service station, manufacturing incidental to retail utilizing no more than 35 percent of the area of the structure for manufacturing, offices, general retail, truck terminals, truck maintenance, and parking, equipment rental, and outdoor storage with appropriate screening. These proposed uses would be in addition to the light distribution of manufacturing offices and commercial sales that are already permitted on this master plan specific parcel, which is C4 zone. The request specifically precludes storage or sale of affordable toilets, and I believe they also have... Okay. We had had some discussion about them not having salvage vehicles on the property at any point, so if Joe's here, you may want to have him address that. But we did not find that on their revised master plan. Staff does feel that some of these uses may fit within the C4 plan commercial district, but the majority of the proposed uses still do not meet the intent of the C4 district. So effectively, our comments haven't changed since last month. We can't recommend approval. That being said, they have done a good job of trying to come to the table and get a little bit more in keeping with what would typically be permitted in C4. One of the things we're having a little bit heartburn over is that there's really not an encouragement for a lot of outdoor storage or sales lots in the C4 district, and some of the things like equipment rental that they're wanting still have that aspect to it.
Okay.
Would you like me to go ahead and proceed with the rezoning comments?
They will go in conjunction. Do you mind doing them both at the same time, Joe?
Actually, it is a master plan amendment. I apologize. I was speaking out of turn. I was thinking of the land and plan amendment and rezoning.
Okay, okay. Well, Mr. Haddix, you want to come speak to that then?
Good morning. Joe Haddix, CSTG. Thank you, Tom. As Tom mentioned, work together. Everybody should remember the discussion last month was, do we take it to a commercial pud? Does that set the precedent because we don't have the 15 acres? So we landed on them, just amending the original master plan. Hopefully, everybody will recall, this is just to basically further define the uses. The original master plan was fairly vague, and what you see out there is large distribution buildings. We have a 13-acre remnant site, which doesn't really set up well for a large-scale distribution user. The Porta-Johns have been, you know, strictly prohibited use at this time. Developers also able to commit to anything on that site. On the northern part of this site, they will construct a minimum of 5,000 square-foot building to complement the building. This is an older aerial. If anybody's driven out there recently, they'll see on the southern portion of the site, there's an 8,000-square-foot building, 5,000-square-foot building there currently, Amazon vans stacked up throughout. So... And we can add to that use, more than happy to add to the prohibited uses, salvage vehicle storage, repair.
So you are prepared to commit to not having that on site?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We can get an amended master plan that shows that?
Yes. So with that, I think we've done what was requested. We worked with Tom and Christopher. I think we've come up with a reasonable solution to move this forward without, you know, I know precedent was a big word used last month. Like I mentioned, I think setting a precedent, going to a commercial pud under 15 acres is probably a little bit bigger deal than just amending a C4 master plan with some additional uses. So, my opinion, happy to answer any questions. Believe we've committed to everything that staff has asked for, so appreciate y'all's consideration.
Tom, there was... Last month, you had talked about staff approving whatever type screening was used, I believe?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure that's in your comp... You may have said it and I didn't?
I may have skipped over it because I knew you'd heard it before.
Okay.
Let me look.
Outdoor storage with appropriate screening?
Yeah, outdoor storage with appropriate screening.
That would have to be approved through the planning office, correct?
Yes, yes. And the question here, this is an economic development corridor in the county along the 840 corridor. You have some facilities that already have retail storefronts, but they're indoors. This does set a precedent by allowing some outdoor sales and display. You do have some outdoor parking arrangements and things that are already going on in the truck dispatching and warehousing facility in Big G Express. Big rig trucking, while it's not Zoned C4, is in the middle of a bunch of C4's owned property. It's C3 with a pud overlay. They did not have the opportunity to do a pud overlay because they don't have quite 15 acres, so they're kind of pinched there. So, being that this is an economic development corridor, it's just a matter of whether you think that the outdoor display and everything is adverse to the other uses that are going on there. I think that would be trying to narrow it down to the nitty-gritty of what you're deciding on here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe. Do we have anyone else here today wishing to speak on this case? Any questions from our board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, for clarity, we use the term precedent. So what changed from the last meeting to this meeting? And what takes, because there's still a recommended denial by the board or by the staff, what changed?
They have placed additional limitations and restrictions on their development proposal.
So how much of a delta, a change, or a...
They've committed to...
...impact are we going to have?
I mean, that's what they've done, is they've tried to minimize the impact by committing to enhance screening as deemed satisfactory by staff. They've also cut down the uses to what, whereas before, it was a pretty widespread list that came directly from the C3 Zone District as opposed to the C4. They've limited that down somewhat after discussion with us, or additionally. It wasn't the complete list even before, but they've limited it down even further. And they've also restricted themselves, as one of my staff members mentioned, at least one of the rental facilities that has been bantered about, that I don't even know if they're on the hook to locate here, but at least one of the rental corporations is a nationwide corporation, and they have entire divisions that are associated with just having big, large lots of Porta-John rental facilities. And we did not feel like that necessarily fit in with the quality and character of what else we've got in that business district or that business park.
So, or the board, because we hear complaints and 160 people showed up for one meeting, et cetera. And we've got tasks of taking care of those kind of requests and problems. So, this is great on the 840 corridor. I don't think anybody out here would argue that this is an application that might fit. Okay, I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues. But what about residential area adjacent to it? Did we create some extra headaches?
There is no residential area adjacent.
No, not here.
Oh, okay.
We're setting a precedent that's countywide, not just here. So, concern is, if it's not here, what did we do to ourselves and the county for the rest of the residents by doing this? Yes or no? So I need to know that answer because I don't.
I think it's fair any precedent we might set here, whether we do or not, is that we made an amendment in a strictly commercial zoning that is bordered by other commercial zoning and I-840 and no residential corridor. I think that's the precedent we're setting here, not putting something up next to a residential development.
So another developer couldn't come forward, then? Am I hearing you right?
Well, he certainly could come forward.
That's adjacent to a residential area that's not in this corridor and use that against us, so to speak, or against the county that says, hey, you guys did it at this place and you changed it. Why can't you do it for me?
Well, certainly they could come forward, but I...
Am I accurate, Mike? Am I depiction...
Both of you are. Yes, somebody could come forward and say that what you do here, not binding on any other. Each one of these is fact specific.
And Mike, it would probably, to Mr. Remphro's point, it would be incumbent upon, if they choose to approve this, if you as a board choose to approve this master plan or recommend approval of this master plan amendment, it may be important for you to specify the specifics of this so that it doesn't set a general precedent, you know, in terms of, well, we're approving this in part because it is internal to an industrial and business park and not adjacent to residential property.
Can that be stated, Tom?
It can be, as a part of any motion, I would think. Would you agree, Mike?
Yes. In fact, probably the more information you use to support or deny the request, the better.
Part of my request and concern, Mike, is for you, because we deny one because it is adjacent to something else and not in this corridor, and we have a reason. It doesn't, by definition, fit this particular defined usage. And then all of a sudden, they're suing us and you having to take that on because the precedent's been set. So, again, we're tasked with that, and I need to table it to figure out what's to do. So with specifications of the board, you're saying that that could be not eliminated, but reduced?
It can be reduced, yes. And the more reasons you give for support or denial, the easier it is, number one, for me to defend it if somebody takes it up to the chamber. Number two, for y'all to review future requests and differentiate between the facts. You know, we did this one because this particular fact was present that's not present in number two.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ash.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ash.
Tom, this is the last piece of property on that system right there, isn't it? And it is bordered on commercial on every side.
I believe that's correct.
Interstate.
Yes, sir. I believe the remainder of this business park has been developed out.
Everything's done except this.
Yes.
Which brings another good question up, my colleague. What if it gets sold and these people aren't using it? Is that perpetual throughout?
Conditions of the master plan would run with the land until such time as someone came in proposing to amend it.
Any other questions from our board?
No, sir.
I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Ash, based on staff recommendations and the concessions that have been made.
They're making statements that they're not, no.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
But under the modifications that I've heard here about no Porta-Johns, no junk cars, all these things have been approved.
Adjacency to the property.
Adjacent to the property. On all those things in the comments to be incorporated into the motion, Mr. Jennings?
We need to specify those comments, don't we?
So you would make a motion to approve with the commitments that have been made by the applicant in the interim since last month? And with the understanding that this lot is internal to an industrial business park development and not adjacent to residential property?
I've said it better myself.
With today's comment as well, the additional...
Yes.
For general purposes, for the people who sit in here saying, what are they doing? We heard this last month.
Yes, sir.
We sent them back to planning to work these things out, and I appreciate y'all working with them, getting those things out.
We have a motion from Mr. Ash, second by Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed, that motion will carry. And does that go, now go to the county commission, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next month, I assume?
No, David.
In November.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. We're now ready for new business?
The next item on the agenda, there's no action required. This is for informational purposes because it's in the city of Mount Juliet's urban growth boundary, but the applicant, or application's been made by Jake Porter of Civil Site Design Group, representing developer Kirby Witt, requesting a rezone property from R1 Rural Residential to C3 Highway Commercial. The property is located on Central Pike and Earhart Road, and its further reference is Wilson County Map 75 parcel 22 and tax map or property map 76 parcel 85. The combined parcels for this request contain approximately 11.99 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Negative recommendation. Speaking of Mount Juliet last night?
Last night, well, I was just getting information from my staff, is that Mount Juliet did recommend against approving that rezoning request as of last night. But it requires no action of the planning commission that's pertinent to the county commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Because it's in Mount Juliet's planning region. Are you ready for the next item?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay, the next item is a rezoning of property. It does not require a land use plan amendment because it is largely in keeping with the current land use plan. You may hear some things out of me on this one that are a little different because frankly, this development is different than, in my estimation, anybody in Wilson County, whether it be Mount Juliet, Lebanon, or Watertown, or the county, has seen in the way of a residential development. They are using something, you may hear me refer to something referred to as form-based code. If you're familiar with the seaside development in Florida, that's a form-based code development. So this may be something that's, the way it's designed and everything is more akin to something you might have seen in some resorts you've visited, A1A or Seaside, and some other near-traditional town developments where they're using the actual architectural form to kind of be a governing factor in how the development occurs. And they're also doing some things that I think will add to the uniquity of the development and make it more of an asset to Wilson County, should you as a planning commission and the county commission choose to approve it. The applicant, BNR Lebanon Investments, is seeking to rezone property from R1 Rural Residential and A1 Agricultural Zoning to an R1 with a planned unit development overlay. The property is referenced as Wilson County Property Map 14, being parcels 5.04, 7, 8, and map 26 parcel 3.03. The property contains approximately 406.81 acres. The county land use plan calls for low-density residential development in this area. R1 Rural Residential District fits this description. The difference in number of lots realized on the property should always be a consideration if other lot width and bulk requirements can be met, and when evaluating the difference in current zoning and what is being proposed within this R1 with a planned unit development overlay district. Should the county planning commission or the county commission ultimately decide to approve the request for rezoning, the attached packet will be made part of the rezoning request, and any deviation from the approved plan will have to come back through the planning commission for approval of that amendment to the master plan. So with that being said, using the cluster provision formula found within the Wilson County zoning ordinance to calculate potential densities, approximate densities, the proposed R1 pud zoning that they are proposing, they're proposing, or they, it could allow as many as 439 single-family residential lots or 1.44 units per developable acre. If the current property were to be developed in straight R1 zoning along with the previous lot entitlements, because they have a pre-existing preliminary plat approval or sketch plat approval on about 160 acres or a little bit more of this overall 406-acre tract that predates our changes in density that we adopted about, as a county, about a year and a half ago, using that density calculation, they could currently get about 353 single-family residential lots on the property. So the rezoning gives them approximately, they can get as many as 439. They're asking for 435 lots in this master plan, so it's about 82 lots difference. It is worth noting that the developer is committing to minimum planned unit development standards, including such features as residences with a minimum of 2,000 square feet of heated floor area. All utilities throughout this development will be underground. They will possess an amenities package in compliance with, and it's sometimes exceeding the requirements of the Wilson County Plan Unit Development Regulations, which requires amenities for each phase, and there are different lot thresholds that certain amenities have to be established, such as for a clubhouse and larger central overall amenity packages. Staff will note that this development does have road frontage on Bates, Estes, and Yelton Roads, as well as Chafford Place subdivision and the main road, spine road that goes through that. So they have the ability to have road frontage on all four of those roads. The developers have hosted a series of public workshops in the past year, and from that feedback, they will only have connections to Bates and Estes Road. So they are proposing not to connect to the Chafford Place subdivision or Yelton Road. Wilson County Road Commission and County Regional Planning Commission will require road improvements to Bates and Estes Road near the entrances at the time of actual subdivision development, regardless of what the traffic study findings are and regardless of whether a major subdivision of this property is zoned. So if they went back and just did a straight zone subdivision, as would be their right right now, we would still require those improvements at the entrances of wherever they propose to have entrances. But for the purposes of this master plan, they are proposing to only have two entrances at Bates and Estes. At a minimum, there's a requirement for a center turn lane and acceleration lane and deceleration lane installation at the primary entrance to any proposed significant subdivision along with the widening of substandard roads to be utilized. Staff has made this rezoning request available to executive representatives of the school system. They have taken the information and are aware of it and can, if it gets approved, they will incorporate it into their plans. Staff has also made copies of the rezoning request available to emergency services. The proposed rezoning is within Station 6, Old Lagarto Road, Station's five-mile ISO response zone for fire and emergency services. The county stormwater department has requested that the applicant, planning commission, and other interested parties be put on notice that the presence of sinkholes, caves, wetlands, streams, and land areas that are extremely flat, marshy, or steep may affect further development of these tracks. And in fact, there are some cave systems on portions of this, and I think you'll see from the developer where they're proposing to avoid those areas with private residential development and keep them in common space, along with several required open space improvements and development requirements that are above what the county can require. Under the planned unit development ordinance, section 5.5 subsection 114, the planning commission and the county commission are given leeway to act in a comparable manner to the board's zoning appeals in the way of approving any variations from the development standards. I'm sorry, I'll get back to it. In this instance, the developer is asking for variances regarding planned unit development standard requirements. These are as follows with reasonings for why they're requesting it. Also, you may refer to pages 26 through 25 of the master plan submitted that the applicant has submitted. First, the applicants are asking to allow 10-foot of separation in their neighborhood center district, which is approximately 76, it would affect 76 lots of their total of 435 lots proposed, and they're asking for 20-foot separation in their neighborhood general and waterfront districts, which would affect 96 lots. The minimum pud requirement in our zoning ordinance is for 30-foot of separation between structures on adjoining lots, and all other lots within the development will meet that requirement. However, if the developer were to develop the property under the current cluster provision, which is a use by right at this acreage, then we would already allow them to be 20-foot separated, just for informational purposes, if they weren't going for a pud rezoning for all the lots. So they're asking for a portion of the lots to have 10-foot separation between properties, basically five-foot other side of the property line, and then 96 of them to have 20-foot, 10-foot from the property line, which is what we allow typically in our cluster. The applicants are requesting to allow some lots to be as small as 5,500 square feet to allow flexibility within their design throughout the development. The pud requirement states the minimum lot size must be half of the parent district's size, which in this case, because R1 zoning typically allows 40,000-square-foot density, it would be 20,000 square foot, would be the minimum we would typically allow. As a point of reference, if the developer were to develop this as a cluster, there would be no lot size threshold within the development. And again, that's just for comparison purposes. Thirdly, the applicant is asking to be allowed to construct 5-foot sidewalks throughout the development as opposed to 6-foot sidewalks. A little bit of background, if the sidewalks are developed in compliance with Americans with Disability Act requirements, staff finds that this request would be acceptable. The 6-foot width that was initially put into the pud requirements was in order to be in compliance with ADA compatibility. If there's a way for them to provide 5-foot sidewalks and still be ADA compatible, we're fine with it. The applicants are requesting to allow more than 50 lots on a private road. They are seeking to make part of their development private to allow them more flexibility with the pedestrian circulation that status quo development would not allow. What that means is, when you will look at their master plan, and they'll explain this a little further, they're wanting to have pods, main roads that are public roads, and then have what might otherwise be a gated community, but in this case, they're not proposing gates, they're just proposing monuments at either end to say that behind this, this is a private road network that the HOA is responsible for. And they're doing that so that they can put sidewalks adjacent to the roads. There's been, while we have some requirements in our subdivision development regulations for sidewalks, the road commission historically has not allowed sidewalks in the right-of-way. So if somebody wanted to build sidewalks, they would have to build them outside the right-of-way, and that pushes it way back on the property in many cases, once you get past utility easements that are typically adjacent to the right-of-way. So in an effort to try to overcome that problem, they are proposing to have private road networks that the HOA would ultimately be responsible for maintaining so that they can have those sidewalks adjacent to the road. That was a long explanation, I'm sorry. The applicants are requesting that hardy board-type concrete or composite-type siding be an approved material throughout this development to allow for differentiation in structures. The developer has, typically, our pud requires 50% masonry product within a pud for residential structures. They're asking for hardy board to be considered part of that 50%, if I understand correctly. The developer has put in the master plan that vinyl will not be permitted building material on any part of a residence within the development. The initial pud requirement for outlining building material was enacted to provide for differentiation materials permitted while intending that acceptable materials under the pud regulation would ensure more sustainable quality appearance and heightened lifespan of the materials selected. And lastly, the applicants are requesting that the minimum square footage for outdoor living space per residence be amended to 300 square feet from what we typically allow in the pud, or require in the pud, which is 600 square feet of private outdoor recreational or living space. And they're asking for that on 185 lots spread across the development. They're again requesting this allowance to provide for heightened differentiation in architectural features for the houses proposed within the development. It should be noted, they are asking for this allowance only on a portion of the total 435 lots included within this rezoning request. With that, I invite you to kind of look through your, through the master plan amendment. I should go back and mention that this is in close proximity to Century Farm, or two Century Farms. One of them is the Wright Jennings Farm that's located on 231 Northwest Williams Road, and the Bates Farm, which is located on 380 Bates Road. Stormwater, I've already talked about stormwater. What else did I miss, Christopher? Yeah, with the above stated statements made, staff can recommend approval of the request. Yeah, with the above stated statements made, staff can recommend approval of the request for rezoning to R1 rural residential zoning with a planning to development overlay. The master plan submitted by the developer reflects the criteria and commitments outlined above and in our estimation meets or exceeds the intent of the PUD language, even though it may not meet it to the letter, per their variance request, along with several required open space improvements and the development requirements that are above that the county can require.
Okay, thank you, sir. Who do we have here today to represent this case, please? Mr. Thorne?
Sir, Good morning Chairman, Commissioner Caleb Thorne, developer representative for the project, 1100 Missoula Drive 11 in Tennessee. I've got a presentation, some thoughts that I'd like to go through, but before that, wasn't sure if I had any slides I could work off of or not.
Do you have the slides?
Great, great. If we could start those, it'd be much appreciated. I just wanted to first introduce our team. We've got our developer owners, Shelby Blackstock, Austin Rec, we have the planning, TPU DC, Jessica Wilson, we have engineer Reagan Smith, Wes Harris as part of our team. I really appreciate Tom's summary and I'm going to be brief in my statements, but I do feel like because of the scale and project and the time, it's worthwhile for these thoughts and comments. The land, as Tom mentioned, this is a portion of the Reba McIntyre property that's located in the north area of the county. As Tom noted, it's about one mile off Highway 109 with access off Bates Road and Estes Road and is contiguous to the Old Hickory Lake. As you see on the slide before you, as Tom mentioned, on the left side of the slide, it shows a star representing our site and illustrates the future land use map, how we are adhering to that with the low-density residential. The exhibit on the right illustrates the sketch plat that was approved in early 2023 for the property and it's something you all see all the time. It's a typical county subdivision, meaning that base zoning at that time.
It's a cluster provision, was it not?
It was.
Yes.
Cluster, yes, sir. After that got approved, the owner, developers felt like that, you know, this property's been their family a long time and just felt like if they move forward with that direction, it might be cutting themselves short of what they're trying to create out here in the county. So they decided, let's take a step back, let's bring in other team members like the ones I just mentioned. Let's reach out to the public, let's talk with further our political officials, let's involve staff and come up with something more desirable in the community, something they want to be proud of, something the county wants to be proud of. And that process is what led to the next steps of what we went through on this project. What we did is, as Tom mentioned, is we did a week-long, what we call a charrette. It's a public input opportunity, sent out letters to the neighbors, invited them to come, met with utility authorities, staff, political officials to tell us what they want or do not want when it comes to developing this piece of property. A couple of the highlights we heard from that was, you know, from the thought of, how can we create a destination community in our county? One, when people come to representatives here, they say, hey, you should go check out this place, or you probably want to move here. Or when you have office executives saying, we need somewhere to put our leadership, where should we put them in Wilson County? And that's a broad statement, but we took it to heart. Another comment we heard through the process from the residents of Schalford, they said, we really don't like this plan, how it's coming through our development. Schalford is a dead-end road meant for stubbing to the future, but when you're developing acreage of this scope, coming through a community that has lived in that environment, middle environment for so long, changes very hard. So we took that to heart and made sure our next plan did not do that. Another comment was neighbors on the larger parcels desiring it not to be an impact to them directly. How can you push this development further away from the neighborhoods and make it more towards the non-residents being the Old Hickory Lake area? That's a challenge, but it's one we also took into consideration. And a large one from the political side was limiting the stormwater impacts to the Spence Creek drainage basin. That means they've had concerns out here from development in this drainage basin that the county's studying right now with FEMA. How can we limit that as we look to the development? And then the last highlight that we heard from the neighbors were, is there opportunities to create public open spaces that we can also enjoy, that we can be a part of, not just the community itself? So those were the highlights that came out of that week-long process and at the end of that is when we came up with a plan at that time that we've really stuck to those roots and those rules, which is the next slide that you see before you. This plan is one that illustrates those comments. It's showing the 435 proposed lots. As you see on the bottom left of Schalford, I'm sorry, but my pointer is not working. As you see on this, the access of Schalford that was going through here is no longer happening and our primary access now is on Bates Road. And as you look at what this development's made out of, it's made out of these typical lot criterias. The first one being the neighborhood edge. Neighborhood edge is the larger lots along the access location and along the perimeter of the development and then along the exterior. So as we're transitioning from largely rural development, we wanted to transition our development the same way, putting the larger lots on the perimeter and then bringing it in within the community as we transition those sizes. The next one being the neighborhood general is a large portion of the development, the yellow lots that you see, which is comprised of, a typical house you might see going on those lots would be potentially like an Eastland, a Stewart, a Fleming, those kind of homes that you see currently in the community, those are the style of homes you'd see on those yellow lots. The third one being the neighborhood center are these orange ones. They are alley-loaded homes, single-family homes detached, fronting, largely fronting public open spaces. So what that means, these are smaller lots. What that means is the areas of where those homeowners are going to utilize is a public open space area that's not on their property, but out their front door. And that's a style of home that is very popular these days of having amenities that they don't have to maintain. And being alley-loaded, it really makes that neighborhood feel happen that way. The fourth residential is waterfront. This is a small area right here, it sits on the ridge line over what we call the cove area. This is boat-accessible cove area and we do have approval for a few slips out there from the core, but this is not a true, what you feel like at Cherokee Marina, this is more like a community kind of slip area. We do have some potential commercial or bed breakfast Marina area, which is right here in the cove as well. This is, as we tried to adhere to comments and also the future land use, how can we create potential opportunities within a community like this that might have a, you know, a sandwich place, a bait shop, or an area that can be exposed to that cove area? So we gave it a possibility in that, to do that. In this as well, you also see the open space. You know, by using the standard base zoning or cluster zoning, we felt like you cannot create this style of open space that we have within our plan. And this open space is how we're able to adhere to the comments about not having the development adjacent to the existing area or residential homes and farmlands, but pushing it more towards the lake. It also satisfies, how do we limit the impact of stormwater in the Spence Creek? If you follow this road, it pretty much follows a ridge line and everything on the other side of that ridge line drains towards the lake. So thus, out of our 406 acres getting what we call developed, only this minimal area here is what's impacting the Spencer Creek development. And that was really thought highly from Commissioner McFarland because as he lists his constituents in this area, it was very important for him. Next slide, please. This one just illustrates what we have right now as a potential phasing plan. This is a large development which could well be over a 10-year development. It's comprised into eight phases, the larger having approximately 130 lots, the smaller having approximately 30 lots. We do expect, anytime you do a project like this, these phase lines are probably going to change, it's just understood. However, we do understand that if that happens, it would have to come before you all, probably at the same time as the plat would come before you as well. But this is our current thoughts for that phasing process. Next slide, please. So just leaning in onto the open space a little bit more, when you think about open space and you think about development, when I say a 406 acre development is being proposed with over 59% of it as open space, that's unheard of, uncommon to Wilson County. That's over 240 acres of going to be open space. What do I mean by open space? When you hear open space, this is going to be the lighter color green of natural, this is what is probably getting bush hogged right now or cut for hay, these natural areas, that's what that would be. One other one, the next one, which is a different shade of green, is what we call agriculture open space. So when you think about what this community is, when we say a community within a community, what is Wilson County? We're an agriculture community. How can we create communities being developed and still hold on to the roots of the county itself? And that's what we've done here. We've created through the HOA opportunities for agriculture opportunities. These would be leased, managed, operated by the HOA, trying to create a potential for farm-to-table, not necessarily just farm to these tables, maybe it's farm to other tables, but it's people who come into this county, like and understand the agriculture of the community we have. Our fair is built on agriculture. When they can have the agriculture in their community without having to bush hog it, maintain the fences, get the cattle up, without having to do what it takes to own a farm, but have it in their community, that's still holding on to the roots and the desires of people wanting to come here. And we've created that in the development. Another part of the open space is what you see in this green colored, it's what we call our civic spaces. These are opportunities that are, per staff's comments, which we are very much agreeable to, and making sure every one of these civic spaces are located in each phase. And these civic spaces are not just going to be the passive civic spaces, but in our packet and in the zoning packet, it illustrates civic spaces like squares, plazas, playgrounds, sports fields, or courts, community gardens, pocket parts, that we'll make sure we put one of those in every phase and they're not just repeated in each phase, they're going to be spread out harmonious throughout the development. And that just gives you sort of a flavor of how and why the open space is so important for trying to create this community that we're desiring to do. Next slide, please. This illustrates once again the stormwater. As you see in blue, this is the largely developable area that is draining towards the lake and would not be adhering to the Spence Creek watershed and in orange is the limited area that would be needed to take that into consideration. The green is just undevelopable area. Next slide, please. That wraps up the slides. I just want to close with the variances because, you know, that's important. Why do you all as a commission need to think about rule changes or adjustments? When you think about this development of this scale and as we're proposing a PUD here, the PUD is a regulatory document that, in my opinion, I may be wrong, hasn't been used on a project in Wilson County in probably 20 years when it comes to residential style development.
We have one or two small residential PUDs, but not many.
Not like this. And knowing that, you know, that code was established with great thoughts, with great guidance. However, things change over periods of time and when change happens, you have to analyze it and look at how you might need to modify it. But what stands out to me, when you think about variances, you think about, okay, these are the things they're asking for. What hasn't been pointed out are the things we're doing above and beyond code requirements, which is in your packet. These are things like the size of the property, the open space, the impervious area, the building size, the parking, the civic spaces. These are things that we're doing above and beyond the code and those are just to fill the highlights. But whenever you look at these codes that they've been in place for a long time, but you're trying to create something different, as Tom mentioned, some of these actually adhere to other examples in the code, like as we reference in the design, development design request for minimum lot size. That's already allowed in the cluster of which I'll see, it's just not referenced in the PUD requirement right now. And then the sidewalks. All sidewalks being built in the county right now are five feet, we're just asking to be in that same compliance. Leaning in on those true variances, as I always consider those, would be those side setbacks as Tom mentioned and illustrated on that page 29 that you have, there was exhibit there showing those. The limited ones that I think would cause maybe more of y'all's questions is the 10-foot separation. That is specifically in that neighborhood center, if you'll flip back three slides or two slides to, one more there. That's that neighborhood center area, that is around these public open spaces and that's what it's being limited to. Those are our smaller lots. We have communicated with codes, we have communicated with fire, we have talked with planning. It is a planning variance because the current codes, when it comes to codes, the separation of fire, that would be acceptable based on the conversations we've had. So it's truly a planning variance. And the other one for 20 feet, I honestly feel like that falls in line with the other allowances in the code. It's more of just staying at protocol, but because this is a PUD request, that's why we have to ask for it. The gate one, as Tom mentioned, that's, when you think about private communities as referenced in the code, it has the comment, cannot be over 50 units, we're asking for more than that because if you put these monuments just to meet that code, it doesn't seem harmonious. It doesn't seem, you'll drive by and go, why is that there? The way we've been able to place these that meet this variance, it would almost feel like as you go through one of these zones, you would say, this is where I live because of this monument location versus why is this monument here? And that's the purpose of that request. The finishes, this is another one, I feel like you may ask, why are we asking for having hardy more than 50% per the code? But we are asking for no vinyl, want you to know that. It's really, as you're trying to create character within the development of those finishes, you won't have opportunities for those vertical home builders to create character. Now, we've got references in our code and in our covenants are going to hold character to a harmonious way throughout the development where it won't just look one-offs through there. But having that option for that finish gives these vertical home builders the capability to do that and you're seeing it more and more in our county right now and it's good. My house is built that way, craftsman style and I would hope that people would think my house looks all right, but it's just something that gives a vertical builder that capability. The last one that I think would be one you would like to look at is outdoor area reduction. Why are we asking for that? That's largely because, you know, that's a set square footage for any size lot. Where we're asking for that is on the smaller lots because the character of those lots don't necessarily need to have that hard requirement of an outdoor area for a larger lot. We feel like we're creating enough character. We feel like we're creating enough character with the lot sizes, with the public open spaces, that having that flexibility to reduce that requirement for outdoor square footage would help blend versus hinder. Lastly, as I wrap up, I just want to say thanks to the neighbors that participated. There's some neighbors here who attended every meeting we had, who gave us great feedback, who helped us create something that we walked in there with a blank piece of paper and ended up with this today that I'm very proud of. Also want to say thanks to Commissioner McFarland. Unfortunately, he's not able to attend today. He called me this morning. He had a medical item that he couldn't make it here too, but he is very supportive to this development. And I found that as a great challenge, and I found it also as a great rewardment. When you can walk into a commissioner's zone, hear his feedback, understand his concerns and address it, and get his support, I feel great about that. So wanted you to know that. Also to Mayor Hutto, your guidance of what the county wants and what the county needs is something that I'm hopeful that this development addresses, and hopefully you'll be able to have that as people come in your door and build a point in them in this direction for it. And then to staff, Tom Christopher, been great working through this along with the road commissioner, Cowan, codes. You know, we're asking for something that isn't currently occurring in the county. When you're asking for something different and you're asking for ways to look at differently while also adhering to the requirements that they have to stand behind every day, it's challenging, but we worked together to be able to get to this conclusion. And we did have some comments from fire. I want to make sure they did get addressed with staff in regard to comments about the road sections, that we are addressing those in the package. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I appreciate your time.
Can I point out a couple of things?
Yes, sir.
I need my laser pointer. Go back to the first of his slides, Jim.
So this is a standard cluster provision development, and it only takes up 160 acres of the total 435, but you'll notice it's got a connection to Chafford Place. This is effectively where the watershed between Old Hickory Lake and Spencer Creek that eventually leads to Old Hickory Lake is. It goes kind of this way across the property. And now you can go back to the slide he was just on. You would have also noticed, and I won't go back to it, but the lots in that cluster provision had what would likely be, not that we rule on property value, but just based on the unique features of this property, it's up on a bluff overlooking Old Hickory Lake and Cumberland River, those lots backed up to the bluff as they were down along this edge. One thing that I thought was particularly unique, and I even asked them about to make sure that they intended this, they have green space and a road.
And a public walking path.
And a public walking path along the road frontage. So therefore going, I guess you could say million-dollar lots in the interest of having a feature that everyone can use. I think that's nice, just as a layperson, forgetting my professional hat for a minute. And then the other thing is, not only are they listening to the neighbors about trying not to connect where they heard loud and clear during the public meetings regarding Chafford Place, but they also heard from Commissioner McFarland about his concerns about Spencer Creek watershed and drainage being added to it. And to that point, the only part they have that's largely in the Spencer Creek watershed are these lots here. And those lots actually exceed the size of the lots in Chafford Place and nearby residential lots. So those are all things I think are assets to this design that should be taken into consideration. Lastly, I'll say, I've already heard some criticism from others that will have to vote on this eventually, that well, if our PUD doesn't meet this and they need all these variances, then we need to change our PUD language. That's a more detailed operation to get those requirements done. It probably couldn't be done in the timeframe that this particular development has. Secondly, we can't, we can never design a ordinance that's going to address everything. We made a pretty, what I feel was a pretty good attempt back in, I don't know, 2005 or '06 when we adopted our Plan Unit Development Language to make sure that what we got out of that Plan Unit Development Language was a quality residential development. But having said that, you know, you get something like this, you just have to determine whether or not what they're offering justifies giving them the different variances they're asking for, and that would be up to you.
Well said.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Don Floyd. I live at 540 Bradshaw Road. Bradshaw Road has got a 30 mile an hour speed limit on it, and Bates Road has got a 35 mile an hour speed zone. We're having speeding. What's happened is they found out that this is a shortcut over to 109. So we got all kinds of people using this going over there. We've had a couple of our people call the sheriff's office complaining about speeding. We're not talking about running 10 miles over. We're talking about people coming down Bradshaw Road that's 30 mile an hour running 50 and 60 mile an hour. These are very narrow, nice roads. There's no access for when UPS and Amazon comes to my wife's house every day. So they park in the middle of the road, so now we've got it shut down to a one-lane road. So when I found out about the zoning, I came down, got a little bit misled. I came down on Monday, and this gentleman over here, and the engineer, sat down with me and told me that this meeting was going to be Monday, the 19th of October. So I went home, scratched it in, well, the 21st is Monday. So I find out Wednesday night at 7:00 that this meeting is today. So I got busy, fixed up some petitions, I went over to Shaflin Place to talk to them to see what their thoughts were on it. Well, Jerry McFarland had sent the homeowners association a note, there's no need for you guys to come today. We've changed our plans. So I went out, and we've got 69 people who have signed, and I'll give them to you. Everybody didn't know anything about this. This engineer's talking like everybody in that community knows what's going on. Nobody knew anything about it. They thanked me for coming in and showing what was going to go on there. We've got a traffic problem the way it is now. Put 435 houses in there, you're talking about 1,000 cars a day on top of what we're putting up with now. They've got a beautiful setup. There's nothing wrong with what I see they're doing. It's just getting these people to that position. So they're going to draw, I don't know how many people they could draw, but traffic is our biggest problem. I've had several comments that say, what is Wilson County going to do with our roads? Are they going to come in and expand them? I have no idea. Academy Road and Coles Ferry, you add these 435 homes, what's that going to do to that road? And you all know what 109 is like right now. Everybody says, I hate to get on 109, that suicide lane in the middle, trying to get into their lanes. So that's the biggest problem is traffic. The next big thing that the people that I talked to yesterday, school, is a big thing. You're going to need, I ran into a couple of teachers, and they said, right now, Wilson County has got all the students they can handle on the buildings they have. They even went in and said, we're struggling to get school bus drivers. So can you imagine how many school buses is going to come in and out of this addition? 600 kids, how many school buses? Do you reference 50 kids on a bus? That's a bunch of school buses. Is there anyone with you people who have connection with the sheriff's department that you could help us with the traffic problem that we've got right now to get it settled down?
Have you spoken with the sheriff?
I have not, but my neighbor has.
I have, twice.
He doesn't even use our lane.
And they've offered, they've got an extra lane or a driveway that they offered the sheriffs to use if they want to come in and run radar. So nobody will get back with us.
I'll work on it.
I appreciate that, sir.
Will you give me your phone number? I'll get with the sheriff. And tell me your name one more time.
Don Floyd. You might want to get Jamie's information also.
Yeah, you can call me. J-A-M-I. Last name is Melani, M-E-L-A-N-I.
You live down there, right?
Pardon me?
You live down there?
Oh, yeah.
I live across from you. I live on those sides, fourth district, but we rent there together. Traffic lights.
I suppose he's okay there.
Who do I give these petitions to?
If you would give it, Tom, who do you want him to give the petition to?
If you wish to, if you wish to inspect it as members, you can just pass it down from that end, and I'll take it in the end.
If you would, sir, I will try to do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Everyone that I dealt with, I think we could have got a book full of people who are against the traffic situation that's going to happen there. So traffic is our big problem. Another thing that came up was the fire department. What's that going to do, the fire? That's a lot of housing back in there. Is the fire department going to have to expand to take care of that? So what most people ask me is what Wilson County's going to do, which I had no idea. I'm just trying to get out and help our community to solve problems. So hopefully you people can come up with solutions for us, and I thank you for your time. Got a beautiful facility here. This is gorgeous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Don sits down, you mentioned the word petition, but you didn't tell me what it was for and why.
It's for...
Just for the record, please tell me.
Yeah, it's for, it's on the petition at the top. It says that we're against this zoning.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so it's on the top of the petition.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today? Please, ma'am. We'll get you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Marsha Cummins. I live at 3031 Lillard Place. It's on the cul-de-sac that backs up to Mr. Tubbs' property right there on the base of the, runs close to Estes Road there.
There's a laser pointer there if you wish to use it.
Oh, great, yes. We are, sorry, sorry, sorry. It's not coming up. Oh, you got to hold it right there. There, that cul-de-sac, right there. First off, I appreciate you listening to me today, and I thank Mr. Floyd for coming by yesterday morning and letting me and my husband, Jim, know about this meeting today. We've watched, you know, kind of things happening in the past when this whole conversation started with the rezoning months ago, and then it kind of disappeared, and then the signs showed back up again recently is when we saw them. We were out of town a lot last month for vacation and whatnot, family stuff. But I basically canvassed my neighborhood, which is Heritage Valley, which is that whole subdivision right there that includes Lillard Place, Noah's, and Lucan or Lucian or however you want to say the name of the street. It also includes a part of Estes and Bradshaw Road there. The gentleman mentioned that he has, he really appreciates all the neighbors' input. I don't, from what I heard yesterday, I don't think that much has been heard from our surrounding communities, which is Heritage Valley, Heritage Highlands, Chestnut Bend. Those are, all of those houses that are basically downhill from this community. We do get quite a bit of runoff from the farmland that's just adjacent to us, which is just adjacent to the final phase of this subdivision into our property. Fortunately, right now, it runs to the side of our property and back to their pond. I don't know what will happen once the trees are cleared and the property changes above us. With that being said, I also want to address the noise complaints that we have coming from the steam plant across the river. I think this is a beautiful community that they've set up, but I don't think a lot of thought has been given to the view from the yards across the Cumberland River, what they're going to actually be looking at and listening to. We've had the TBA, not TVA, I'm sorry, the EPA set up in our backyard with microphones listening to the steam plant noise that comes when they are starting up a unit. And I've talked to Mr. McFarland about that, and have attended meetings over there at the steam plant, and they have put baffles in to buffer some of the noise. But there are times when they're starting up a new unit that it sounds like 747s are landing in the property adjacent to us, and it typically happens that night. We can't seem to get anything done about that. So we're also wondering how this new development is going to affect the carry of that noise from the steam plant with the trees being, you know, some of the trees being removed and buildings going up, and how that's going to create additional noise for our property and the surrounding properties around us. There was a time that I had, I think it was Mr. Cherry's phone number, who was the steam plant manager. He gave me his phone number to call him anytime there was a noise issue, and which I did several times at 11 o'clock at night, and basically told him, I'm not sleeping, neither are you. So I appreciate that he listened to us, and, you know, they did something about putting baffles in to help with that. But we still have an issue with the sound. So are these new homeowners going to be, have this disclosure made to them? What actually comes off that steam plant, the noise? We can hear them unloading their barges from our property. We can hear the, whatever's happening over there, we can hear it. So I just think clearing of the lands and developing homes and opening up spaces is going to create even more of an issue with the sound. That's just an opinion. In talking to my neighbors yesterday, these are the concerns that came up, who, not all of them voiced it, they really didn't know anything about this meeting or the plans of the development of the community. So I think that there should have been a little more effort put into Heritage Valley, Heritage Highlands, Chestnut Bend, those who are going to be dealing with the pass-through traffic and increased traffic flow. Schools, the new school that's being built in double log cabin was a concern, that do they have enough space to accommodate the students that are going to be coming from this neighborhood? Construction traffic and noise, will there be blasting? Do we know that yet? Is there going to be a lot of blasting happening on this property?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, that is a concern as well, along with the runoff, the current road conditions in my neighborhood alone in Heritage Valley. We call probably about once every month to get either a storm drain issue corrected or cracks. And our cul-de-sac alone have been so bad that we now have small bushes that grow up through the cracks in the road. So their answer to that, because we had been spraying that ourselves and taking care of that and clearing the cul-de-sac because no one would come and do that as well, we had construction workers, when 109 was being built, park on our cul-de-sac, eat lunch, and proceed to use the bathroom in the cul-de-sac, throw their garbage there, and that kind of stuff went on. So there's going to be a lot of construction workers there looking for places to park and have lunch. We again had to intercede on that ourselves. We would just go out in our front yard and stand and cross our arms and wait until they left because we're not going to confront people. But we did the cleanup ourselves. We cleared the cul-de-sac ourselves. We sprayed the cracks ourselves until recently I called and complained again, and they came out and sprayed the cracks themselves. But nothing is being done to fix our current road situation in our neighborhoods. They'll repave Bradshaw, Bates, and Northwest Williams, but they won't come into the neighborhoods and repave those neighborhood streets. So here, we're going to have a brand-new neighborhood that's going to have beautiful new streets, and the rest of us around... that's going to have beautiful new streets, and the rest of us around won't. So, if we can't take care of what we currently have and be responsible in our growth, because I'm not opposed to growth, I'm just, I would rather us approach it in more of a proactive nature. Let's take care of what we have first and then add to what we currently have. And I don't see any answers to any of these things currently, because either we don't have the funding or we don't have the resources. I'm not sure what it is. My preference for that property would be that we have larger lots, five, 10-acre lots that can be sold and, you know, have single-family homes built there. Of course, I'm not building it and I'm not doing it, but, you know, that's what we have in our neighborhood, anywhere from one to two-acre lots, single-family homes. We don't have an HOA. Most people take care of their properties. And we moved here 15 years ago to have a property like that. I understand growth. I'm, you know, I'm in real estate myself, so I get it. But, I just, I see Wilson County as getting a little ahead of ourselves and not taking care of what we currently have and establishing better road systems so that we could build stuff like this and be responsible in our growth. Someone has suggested that we can get a delay, a 30-day delay for a better flood study, because the people at the end of Noah's Ark, and I believe Susan's going to touch on that here shortly, and even at the end of our cul-de-sac, the runoff can be extreme during heavy storms. And they have flooding in their, at the end of their street that is almost directly connected to this. So, again, I don't think that there's been enough of a rain-water study, runoff study on the neighboring subdivisions and how that might possibly affect this. Emergency services was also concerned. We have that one little emergency service on 109, and I don't know how, I just, I just think they're going to, we're going to have to do something to make about, you know, beefing that up a bit. I think that's about all I've got for now, and I'll let somebody else talk on some other things. But, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to, to answer.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Susan Redman. I live at 2015 Noah's Ark Circle in Lebanon, and our house backs up to Bates Road, where the, there's a road that comes out and it intersects with Bates, and we're right there. So, I'm basically three houses down from Yelton Road. I did not receive a letter. I didn't receive any information of the development potential. I think it's beautiful. I don't have a problem with the development, but I do have a problem with flooding. Currently, that area is a pasture now, so it's just all farmland. And even with the land to absorb the water, anytime we get heavy rain, the water just flows down to our house. It flows on Bates Road and it floods over that road. The county's aware that it's flooding, because I see the county trucks out there. Every time we have a big rain, they're out there. The last time it rained, I think this spring, they had bulldozers out there and dump trucks to pick up the debris out of the ditch to try to help the flow of water go through, so they could remove it from the road. It's a continual problem every year. If it rains a lot one year, it's going to flood. The road's going to flood, and then the land, the area through our property floods. There's, it's a dry creek most of the year, but if there's a heavy rain, it flows so heavily through there that I have had plants ripped out of the ground with the flow of water, and they've just gone, I guess, somewhere down the river. But, we are, we are in a flood. Our land is a drainage area. So, because of that, all the water and that main part that he's talking about, that little yellow part right there, we basically live right there. That's the part that we're concerned with, because when you put houses on there, it's going to cover that land area, and then that extra water's going to have no place to go, except to my house. And currently, I know there's a study saying that 95% of the water is going into the river, but I'm concerned with the 5%. And I know I already have flooding now, and I don't want that to increase, because I don't have flood insurance. I probably can't get flood insurance, but I'd like a guarantee that that other 5% isn't coming down to my property. So, that's my main concern, so.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
Derek Dodson, 106 Chapman Drive. I think it would be easier for each of you to coach the Vols to a victory tomorrow against Bama than it is for you to consume all the information you've been given here today and wisely make a decision. I have a question, and Tom began to answer that, but I would like to hear more specifics, which is, I'm hell-bent against anything that defies common sense, and common sense dictates that high-density development near the river or lake is a very bad idea. So, what I'm concerned with is the buffer against the lake and the river, whichever you want to call it, and what the precise space is. There was a slide that was shown that indicated, going back to that tip at the very top, it looked like there was a lot of high-density development. I just can't figure out how close that comes to the river. So, if, if there could be some detailed definition of distances from, from the river with this housing, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tom, you want to address that now?
I'll do my best. I may have to rely on the applicant to give you specific distances. I do not know that. But, I can tell you that I think the area, Derek, you're talking about is right in here?
Yes.
Okay. They are proposing a marina development that would be like a country club. I guess the closest thing I could think of would be Cedar Creek Otter Club, which is, except it's going to be open to the public. It may have an eatery, may have, it may have a set of boat docks, and it does have an inn, which would be allowed as a use permissible on appeal in the R1 District. But, because they're proposing a PUD, they can get it approved as a part of this development. And they can talk to you a little bit more about how many units they're, they're anticipating or whatever on, on that little inn. But, it is a small-scale bed-and-breakfast-type inn. In terms of this portion of the property, I think it's important, not only for, to answer Derek's questions, but also some of the ones that came before him. These lots are larger than, than we can require right now, that are in the Spencer Creek watershed. Again, without going to another slide, the Spencer, excuse me, the Spencer Creek watershed kind of starts and stops right here. That would be the top of the hill, if you will. And so, one thing I do like about this development is it does, with this notable exception, keep all of the drainage draining back towards the lake as opposed to going into the Spencer Creek watershed and exacerbating any problems with Noah's Ark, which I believe, you can barely see it because it's faded or ghosted outside of the development, but Noah's Ark is roughly right here. This is, this is Lillard, and this is Noah's Ark. And then you've got a large pasture that they're maintaining, with the exception of the very top of it, adjacent Chafford Place, with larger lot development. And then they go up and over the hill to develop their, their development. They are also, it's also noticeable, notable, I believe this is, and again, I may have to rely on the applicant, but I believe this is the general vicinity of the cave that's on the property, or caves that are on the property, and they are, they are intentionally developing away from that and leaving that in open space, so as not to exacerbate any type of runoff into the cave system that could affect anyone. The, so I don't know if that answers your questions. It probably doesn't, Derek.
My question is precisely, when you get to the top portion of this, next to the river, there's high-density development. How close is that to the river precisely? By how many feet, yards, quarter of a mile?
I'm going to have, I'm going to have to rely on the applicant to answer that.
That's what I would want to know if I were you.
And again, there is distance between the, without looking at the plans, which are in the hands of the planning commissioners. There is a, a large buffer and a road adjacent the bluff all the way down. So, this development has a road section between it and the, and the river, as well as a riparian zone with a walkway on the riverside. But, and then up here, you can talk a little bit about what kind of densities you're talking about in the inn, because that's really the only residential development in that portion. The rest of it is more of a commercial village for boat usage, as well as anybody to come maybe eat at the restaurant, ice cream shop, what have you.
I really like Derek's question about rooting the Vols on to win this weekend, because I'm hopeful to be able to do that in Oxford tomorrow. So, that's one I'm going to work on then. But, specifically to the buffer along the river, in the PUD requirements, there is not a, a buffer requirement in that area. And living on the lake like I do myself, buffer specifically to the core is their property line, which we would adhere to. But, as you see in our development that Tom talked about early on, we've created a self buffer beyond what's required out there, which is that walking path along the perimeter of the north, the public roadway, and then setbacks accordingly, before you even get to a home in that area.
Does your plat show the core line that we could show him?
Property line? Well, the, the property line is the core line.
Yes.
And it's shown in the packet.
Okay. Does that help you any, sir? Well, I, I think it's reasonable that you could scale a plat that they're providing, because I don't know the answer to your question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer.
The, a couple of additional things I wanted to answer from the public. As a matter of course, whenever we have a rezoning, we post rezoning signage on the property. We also notify immediately adjoining neighbors, and we also run public advertisement and put it on the website. This developer did opt to have a charrette series, and if some of you were not aware of it, I, I can't control that because it didn't come out of my office. But, in terms of trying to make sure people are aware of it, that's what the signage largely is for. I do think, as much as people have expressed concerns about road issues, schools and other things, it's, it's important to note that if they developed it without coming for this rezoning, by right, if they meet our zoning criteria and our subdivision regulations, they can get approximately 353 lots now. So, it's still a significant subdivision. Just judging by 10 cars a day coming off of any, or 10 trips a day coming off most houses, you're talking about 3,500 trips a day, as opposed to 435 lots that they're proposing, which would be 4,350 trips a day. Just rule of thumb, 10 trips a day, one to school and back, one to work and back, one to the grocery store and back, and a couple of people in each house, or three or four people in each house. That's, that's what you're looking at. But, even with, if they developed it according to kind of what they had initially approved on the 166 acres, they could develop that now, and that does crawl over into the watershed that affects Lillard Place and Noah's Ark more significantly, and they would have an additional 269 acres to develop accordingly to that as well, that would again be spread more across the entirety of the property and into the Spencer Creek watershed. That's one of the things that, from a, from a staff perspective, I do think is advantageous about this proposal.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. We'll get you, sir.
I think it's up there, sir.
My name's Richard Redman, Susan's husband, and I, I just wanted to add something to what she said. Where we live in Noah's Ark Circle, we back right up, we back right up to Bates. And there's a pasture here that has one of those zoning signs in it. Is that being developed?
That's, that's part of this development.
Because it's not marked here. It looks like it's just-
Yes, sir.
Outside.
I was not the one that posted the sign. Some of my staff members were, but I believe their intent was to post it at that road frontage, which is a part of that pasture, or it looks like it.
Well, the, the issue is, is what I want to make, make evident is, the water that comes through that pasture right now ends up on our land. We have a drainage easement. It comes, it comes across the road, a lot of times over the top of the road, and then drains down through our woods and floods Bates and gets close to our home. And, and our concern is, what's going to happen in the future if no one addresses this?
And I think the, the only answer we can truly give you as this board is, this is a rezoning. They will have to submit road and drainage plans to us before this advances any further. And our engineering department and road department will have to approve them before they were allowed to do anything.
Before they are allowed to develop the property, they've got to go through the subdivision plat process, regardless of whether this rezoning gets approved and they go back to cluster provision development, which is what I was kind of laying out, that they have the right to do. They've still got to submit road and drainage plans that have to be accepted by the county. And we, we are going, even with this development, if it gets proposed, because they're developing that little section that is in the Spencer Creek watershed, we're going to be looking at that, particularly knowing now that you have a drainage problem on Noah's Ark that is affected by water flow from effectively where those houses are across that neighboring pasture to, to where Noah's Ark is. We're going to be looking to them to try to provide detention, some other drainage features that would hopefully help not exacerbate your problem. I don't know that I can lean on them to do a whole lot more than not exacerbate the problem if it's already existing. But, I can make sure, we can try to make sure as a staff that they, that the drainage plan they submit at least addresses it, whether it's this, a product of this rezoning, or whether that this fails and they go back and develop it under traditional subdivision criterion that's allowed right now. So, and that was the point I was making about 353 lots. They, they've got a right to develop that now, and it wouldn't go through a rezoning process. It would come to this board for subdivision review, but it's considered a use by right at that point, as long as they meet the zoning and subdivision and design criteria.
If somebody outside of your property causes you harm, what are, what, what can you do?
Yes, sir. There is such thing, I'm not an attorney, and the county attorney might answer that, but in general terms, there's something, such thing as water trespass or drainage problems. If you, if you can truly prove that they, that they have caused your problem and it wasn't there already, then, that, you know, you may have some course of actions. But, and I didn't sleep at a Holiday Inn Express. I should probably shut up. But, Mike, do you-
That would be a private issue, Tom.
Yes. But, having said that, I mean, I don't, I don't have any reason to doubt what you're saying, that during certain rain events, you have drainage issues. But, I'm not arguing that point.
We've got photographic evidence.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I understand.
Going forward, it will be easy to tell whether, you know, we have more-
Yes, sir. And, and as it, again, regardless of whether this gets rezoned or not, if it develops, we're going to do our level best as a staff, or the staff is going to do their level best to make sure that they have drainage plans in place to try to address their impact.
And we didn't get hardly any notice about anything that was going on related to this, and if I just knew where to go, you know?
You can come to the planning office, which is in the basement, room five of the courthouse. You can also typically reference it at the Wilson County, Tennessee website, Wilson County Tennessee dot gov, or Wilson County T N dot gov, and there's a calendar that'll have our planning meeting, and typically we'll post the agendas on there at least, so you'll know what's coming up. And if you've got questions about it, you can call our office at six one five four four nine two eight three six. And I apologize if anybody didn't know about it, but we did, from a staff perspective, we, we made every effort to make sure that the rezoning was posted, so that people, when they were driving by, could say, "Hey, there's a rezoning signed there with a number." No, sir. We've had them up, "Hey, Christopher, when were the signs posted?"
Friday the- Friday the fifth.
Friday, October 5th. Friday, October 4th. The, the, well, I mean, the, the application was probably received on the-
The first.
The first, October 1st. So, we've got to process the application and then go out for our field review, which is when- for our field review, which is when we post it. So, that was in three days, I don't, I don't find that unreasonable to have gotten the posting out, but the flood, flood insurance, since the public is listening, everyone in Wilson County is, is, is able to get flood insurance. If you're not in a regulatory flood zone, it should be fairly cost effective. For instance, for about a $250,000 home and property, it should be around six, six, $800 a year, which relatively speaking is reasonable, whereas if you're in a flood zone, it can be upwards of $2,000 or $3,000 in a regulatory flood zone, as established by FEMA.
What my concern is too, though, there, is if construction curves that causes you floods, or you have to go and buy the insurance, going back to the construction could something be done differently to circumvent that, so that it wouldn't affect?
Yes, sir. And one thing I like about this rezoning perspect, or this rezoning master plan, is they are trying to get most of their development across the top of the watershed, draining towards the lake, not towards you, as, with the one exception of those larger lots just south of Chafford Place.
Well, my main concern, though, is it didn't look like that pasture was in the development.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
I, I don't, well, I do not think that the, the gray area, if that's where the sign is, it may be an error, but if you're out there and looking where their entrance is, that sign, what we were trying to post is where that entrance was, and it looks like it's part, a part of that same pasture, yeah. Where the yellow is, looks like it's part of that same pasture.
Yeah, well, that's developed homes there, right, on that road?
That, that's a new road they're proposing with homes developed on it, and that road goes on across the hill.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So the part that, to your point, the part that might potentially impact you, in my opinion, at least initially, if this were to get approved and they were to develop this way, is largely right there, is where we'd need to be careful about, trying to make sure that they took into account some of the sheet flow drainage or surface flow drainage going downhill towards Heritage Highlands.
That, that development will be northeast.
Or Heritage Va- Heritage Valley, I apologize.
Northeast of us.
Yeah, the rest of it's northeast, but it's over the hill towards the lake.
Yeah, but up there, that's uphill to us, that's why if water comes down, it's gonna be doing.
Correct, but again, they're trying to build the road and get over the hill with the houses.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before you sit down...
Before we go any further, I'm sorry, you have a specific question for this gentleman?
I do, that, actually, Mr. Thor.
Yeah.
There he is. You stated that there's a detention area, and went over it, and it kinda went through, that may affect this gentleman. So the question to you would be, to clarify for him, is that aren't you developing a detention area, and Tom can point it out, right below your new development in the orange-yellow? Is that not where the detention area is in that field that he just mentioned?
Yes, sir.
So you're gonna actually affect and maybe change the drainage that he's experiencing?
To a positive.
To a positive. I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly, I'm sorry, Tom.
But the large is through the land planning.
You need to go to the watershed slides?
If you'd like to, it's too, too forward. Or, one more? There. The orange is the only area that is getting developed that's draining your direction, and that will meet county standards for detention and water quality at the perimeter of that development.
So there's no development south of that orange area?
No, in that orange area, when you try to think about it in context to out there in the field, it's about, that property line is about 350 feet from the Chafford Place property line, so the nice fence that you see, a portion of that is that orange area, but a large portion is not, which is all this field.
Yeah, from Yeltsin up to...
Yes, sir.
The orange area.
Yes, sir, that's Mr. Black, Black, Blackwood?
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Blackwood.
So there's no development there, so we may not have a problem.
I think we've done the best job to listen to your county commissioner's request, he's heard from his constituents out there, to limit that stormwater impact as much as we can, while also listening to the Chafford neighbors and creating access point.
The chairman told us to come here.
Great.
And to get this information, after we talk to them.
Yes, sir.
And one of the things he said we should ask for is a 30-day deferment, until we get studied, you know, get more information together.
We, we're not requesting that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
And if you would, we're gonna take a five-minute break to give our reporter a break here, and we'll be back in session shortly, and we'll get to you first thing, sir. At this time, we'll call our meeting back into order. Sir, I asked, I promised you, you could go first, sir.
You didn't leave.
That's good.
I had to write my name, I put my name...
If you would, please. You can do that as you speak, if you wish.
I wasn't gonna say, I wasn't gonna say anything but for the fact that, you know, some things came up that I became interested in. So my name is Tim Landstrom, and I'm at 106 Chafford. And so, you know, ultimately, partly for clarification, this plan is a different plan from a plan that was already approved last year.
Yes, sir, as, as a use by right.
Yes. So if this plan is not approved, the developers can move forward with that plan.
They can.
And then they just need to clear the hurdles that you've mentioned relative to this, the, the stormwater, the traffic patterns. So basically, this is just a replacement for what was already approved that they could move forward with.
It, it does include approximately 269 additional acres of the Blackstock property.
Yes, yes, which, and, and with, with, oh, the gentleman's not here. With respect to the signs, one of the signs was on the Blacks, was on that southern portion of the property, which, so I can understand his, his confusion, there, there are two, and I do understand that. I guess one question then would be, if that is no longer included, would that original plan blow up and go away? If those acreages were...
If this were approved, I would anticipate, if this were approved, excuse me.
Yes.
I would anticipate that they would be burning their vesting rights in that reapproved plan.
Exactly. My, my question relative to that other acreage, though, if that other acreage were not part of that plan anymore, would that plan be gone simply because that land is no longer being included?
I, I don't follow what you're, are you saying?
That plan, that plan is contingent on the entirety of that landmass being included. If a portion of, if a portion of that plan were no longer to be developed, would the entire plan go away?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I understand your question. Right now, they have entitlements to a, to a central, a middle section of that whole tract you were looking at, that's approximately 160 some odd acre, 166 some odd acres.
Yeah.
And they have entitlements that they have met the prescriptive requirements, as opposed to the subjective requirements of a rezoning, they've met the, the prescriptive requirements of a subdivision development in concept. I think they're in sketch plat approval, and, and they've still gotta go through preliminary plat process, road and drainage plans, and final plat, but they have a right to develop that in, in concept.
Yes, so, so...
And if, if they, if this gets rezoned, that plan that you see on the right goes away.
Yeah.
Ooh.
Praise the Lord. So, yeah, it's, basically, as a neighbor, honestly, hearing all that, I am endorsing what you have before you today, saying please. I honestly, I, I back up to the pasture, I would be adjacent to, I would be, my, my home is adjacent to the six or seven homes that would be along that fence line as it is right now, as compared to being dropped and having like three dozen homes dropped in my backyard, it's not my backyard, but you understand what I'm saying? As a homeowner in that area, I have a feeling that if this is developed, my property value is probably going to go up by 10 to 15% overnight. If the other thing is developed, I think that I take about a 25% haircut. It's, it's, it's a significant difference to me, relative to my own personal home value, relative to these two plans. So in that regard, I absolutely have, I, I have empathy for my neighbors who have storm drainage issue, as raindrops that hit my backyard probably make it to their yard, and I'm sorry for that, and I have empathy for my neighbors who, and I, I speed by you, and I'm so sorry. I, I will be, I will be...
I have a crop, buddy.
I will be much more careful, especially now that I know that you're offering up the, the spot for the radar.
Me too.
But this plan is significantly better than the other. I look at the other, and I see that there's actually a street that would be pointing into my back door.
Two, two things, it does represent 82 more lots than what they would be entitled to right now.
Yes.
And secondly, just for the record, this board, nor really the county commission, can take into consideration property value considerations.
I understand.
At least not, leastways not, from someone that's not an expert in it, such as a certified appraiser.
Sure. And, and I, I understand that, and I also know that I'm probably exaggerating in both directions. But, but that being said, as, as a, as a neighbor, relative to what I see before me, I see the originally approved plan as being detrimental to the area, whereas I see this particular plan as being a benefit to the area, and so...
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case today?
You're welcome.
Okay. At this time, I'm sorry?
Can I ask one question, though?
Who, who do you?
The developer...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can the developer give us some idea of how much blasting and how long it's...
The question, just for the record, for the filming, is can the developer give some idea of how much blasting and how long that might take? And I'll let them answer, but honestly, they won't know until they get out there and are laying utility lines. That is a state overseen function, though, blasting is.
That, that's correct, and we all know, we live in Wilson County, which is one rock, and so natural construction doesn't tell blasting, but I would expect that it could occur throughout the development, however, the, the contractor doing the blasting will have to meet the state requirements for those issues.
Okay. And that, that would be the case, again, whether or not it's rezoned.
That's correct.
If, if they just developed under their current entitlements, it would, they're probably gonna have to blast then, too.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And I'm happy to answer some of those other questions, but I figure y'all's might be the same, whenever they get to the right point.
At this time, we'll close the public comments section, and I will ask our board if we have any questions.
I've got a question on it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Thor.
You've got 435 houses, and you've probably got one or two students per house, what is this gonna affect the school system value? You've got an impact fee from 435 houses, it'll probably run about a half million dollars, but what, is that school that was just built out there, can it handle all those kids?
I'm not qualified to answer that, sir. Tom, I don't know if you have, or Caleb?
I have a response there. We contacted the school system, got a response from Travis Mayfield, Mayfield?
Yes.
It was over the, the growth of the plan, and he said he understands Wilson County's in a growth mode, and the schools will be too, if that's the process that the county hears too. So he feels that they'll, they'll take care of it if this moves forward.
School out there, Ken?
He did not say that, he just felt like they would take care of the growth if this moves forward.
Is the county gonna have to pay to build a new school, or is it gonna complement development?
We're gonna build a school anyway.
Mr. Noakes, the only thing I can contribute is that the adequate facilities tax at $5,000 per single-family unit right now, on 435 houses, would collect approximately $2,175,000 for the, for the adequate facilities collection, plus any increased real estate property tax revenue from each of these houses and improvements.
Any other questions from our board?
Just one comment.
Mr. Ash?
So this is a 10-year development, right?
Okay.
It's not like we're gonna be here today and tomorrow's gonna be there, sometimes we get kinda locked up in things like that, you can visually see it, but my concern over that 10-year period, I don't wanna get in a situation like was in Mount Judit, I won't be here, I will be out there at Cedar Grove.
And I'll be bringing you flowers.
But I'll sign a contract on that thing, get it. If, if they get into the, say, the last couple of phases, and economy goes bad and the project slows considerably, are they, they, they get the grandfather significance of that, or do we have to take each plat each time they wanna go to the next phase?
They get the grandfather significance of this rezoning, however, let's say the economy slows, well, the first thing the developer's gonna wanna do in that case, if it's a different developer than the original or something, is come in, is, is make changes to, I'm just gonna use a blanket statement to, we'll say, cheapen the development. For them to do that in any significant way, they're gonna have to come back to you with a master plan amendment, and to the county commission in all, in all likelihood, if it's a significant master plan amendment, so...
So what I like about this is they're doing phase one on the river first, so they don't have to do phase three and drive through it to get to phase one. I like it when phases back up, where you don't impede the people who've already bought homes, but I think I heard you right, so is each, they're doing this first phase, does each phase in that plat review come here each time?
Yes, well, you...
Or is this gonna be done at one big vote?
You're still gonna have to, once you get this master plan approved through the county commission with rezoning, they've still gotta go through the subdivision review process just like any other development.
That's why, I was trying to make sure of that.
Yes.
Since it was a PUD.
The only difference is, they've got a whole lot of amenities package and stuff that's gonna be associated with each of those phases, that we're also gonna be reviewing and making sure they do.
Any other questions from our board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Empero?
Just to try for expediency, and I'll do my best, Mr. Chairman. Took this drawing, four hours, I went through it, and got some fundamental questions, and I could've used this as packing material, but I couldn't see it, so I used my visor to read the topo lines and everything else that I used to work on clocks with, and I was able to get the questions. So please bear with me. First was, and I'll go through them quickly, is, since this is only connection to Bates and Estes Road, where's the connection for ingress egress construction? Caleb, you and I are gonna have a conversation here, I've got quite a few, no, please, come forward, I don't want you to have to get up and down. Play your point. I don't want, one of the biggest complaints our people have when we start to build these things, in general, is they're driving trucks right past my house, and it's rumbling the windows, it's 5:00 AM. Where are your ingress egress, so that they'll know, and we'll know.
Take each question, one at a time, and answer.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. Because phase one is coming off Bates Road, we have more than likely that the construction entrance will follow this roadway right here, there is also existing gravel access right here, and that goes to the...
On the north side of Chafford?
On the north side of Chafford, that goes to the water tank, that could be another opportunity, but I, I really foresee it being right here.
I would only make note that be cognizant of the people that live there.
That's correct, that's why we're not going through Chafford, even though the public right of way does go to our property there, for construction.
Excellent, excellent. I've got tons of questions on this, but let me go through where people spoke. Is this an HOA community?
It is, yes, sir, and we've submitted the CCRs to staff to review, which are pretty stringent.
Well, the reason I ask that is I've got a question regarding the HOA responsibility.
Okay.
And I'll get to that as we go down through here. I have heard traffic, schools, fire emergency, big thing for me, and I'm sure for our sheriff on the end down here, because we, we agree on that 100%.
One thing on traffic I'd like to say is, we have a letter back from the Wisconsin Road Commissioner in email, agreeing to everything we've put in place, which y'all heard what code requires. Above and beyond that I think stands out as a requirement that we're putting on ourselves, because we did a traffic study, which we got feedback from the road commissioner, it's one of the best ones they've seen, that they felt like they agreed to, is at Academy and Bradshaw, we were doing a left turn and a right decel, if right of way can be obtained in that location, and that would be done by the 175 lot count.
Excellent, excellent. A little comment, too, and this affects you as well, is we had a, an owner come forward, and I think she said that she's owned her property for 15 years, and again, not trying to be the negative guy here, but I move into a property, I build a house, I'm there, the farm is next to me, and the cows make noise, and they have other noises, let's just say. They're there first, and I think the steam plant was there first, way before 15 years, okay? I think they're entering Sumner County, I don't think we have any control over what that is, so I, I just, as a statement for record, I'm not gonna tell Sumner County what to do with their steam plant, and thank God for the electricity they produce, otherwise we're all running a generator and trying to run our homes, that's another comment there. Lastly, in your packet, the very, very small packet, and I'm gonna refer, I don't know if you've got these, Tom, C page 1 dot 1.
I don't have it in front of me, no.
Okay, well, I'm gonna reference these for record. C 1 dot 1 is a topo that I had to look at through this.
C one dot one is a topo that I had to look at through this, and I wrote down some of the zones. And one of the concerns, and people mentioned, up at the bay entrance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Right there, okay? There are, on both sides of this, is a zone AE, FEMA zone AE, that's recorded, and it's a high-risk flood insurance is required, and it's a twenty-six percent chance of flooding over thirty years. You said ten homes are on the bay side or on water side. There's only five really that face the water.
Correct.
Am I correct in that? Okay. So with those five, and then I ask, and if it's already been answered, is are they building some kind of clubhouse over on the other side? And will they both require flood insurance for those, just, is that, you're going to make that known when you sell the properties for those that are out here?
That flood insurance will be based on their elevation of the structure built.
Correct.
And if it is below that elevation for flood insurance, they would be required, and they would have to be notified in a sale.
Which is the BFE.
That's correct, base flood elevation.
That's great. And then the others throughout are zone X, and I'm assuming that since zone X now replaces zone B, that when you put in parentheses, other flood areas, that's the zone B replacement? That's at two percent to one percent possibility for the hundred-year plan?
Sounds correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. I was trying to identify that. And then we've talked about the detention area, which is on page C one dot two, which you've defined already that will help with that, and that's only on the other side of the hill.
Yes, sir.
Down to it.
South side.
Excellent, excellent. On C two dot zero, again, phase eight was not listed, but you've defined what that There are only five, we already talked about that, the caves. In a previous property we discussed that was developed actually near the lake up north of us, one of the concerns of this board and mine is what safety, these are children in this place. So are you going to take steps to make sure that nobody falls in a cave and we have a rescue that takes ten days to get somebody out of it? That's not something you can answer now. It's just a concern that we mentioned to Tom's office and that this board tabled for that other development that is north, it's kind of northwest of us. Some of them may remember what that is. So if you've got caves, I would make sure that the neighborhood is aware and you keep those free from the children and people that do the walking area.
Mr. Empero, you're referring to the former AG property further north.
I am, sir.
That got a subdivision development approved.
Yes, sir. And we made stipulations about those cases, okay? On page C two dot one, we talked about the FEMA AE, it's very detailed there, and I was able to see that, and it's, I don't know how far of it is, I wasn't able to scale this, I was barely able to see it, but yeah, because of this size, all right? Two dot five, I mean, if you're going to hand me this, I'm going to review it.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. There's a narrow twenty-six foot, and I pulled the record requirement for parallel parking. It's been right off the state, which I think we adhere to, which I can actually ask Tom, are we RT RD eleven dash TS dash one A compliant? Is that what we refer to? He may not be able to answer that now because I just brought it out. RD Delta eleven dash TS dash one A defines widths, lengths, parallel parking, and road widths overall, curb to curb, or pavement to pavement.
And what code is that being referenced?
It's the state code RD eleven dash TS dash one A. I pulled off the state.
I can answer one, I can answer this pretty quickly. We don't have any developments currently that have, in the county unincorporated area that have parallel parking allowed.
Yes, sir. Well, that brings to mind this, okay? And I can make you a copy of this, but these are my notes I pulled down about the parallel parking, okay? When I ask about the HOA, I had a point. We have made a commitment under three general provisions, section three, and it's parking enforcement by zoning. We moved it away from the police and brought it into the hands of the HOA. And that's the reason I ask about the HOA. You have hundreds of parallel parking in this thing.
Purposely.
That are only going to be monitored by the HOA according to this legislation.
And that's true, and I'll add to that, they will not be enforced in the zoning ordinance in this instance because they are on the private road networks as proposed.
Which then brings up the most important question, fire trucks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, on page two dash five, it goes from twenty-six feet wide with a single, and there's one in here, and I can't pull it up just yet, that's not thirty-six, thirty-five, or thirty-eight feet wide. And you've got different ones in here with an eight-foot width. That gives you what they recommend as a minimum, twenty feet. And you're there on that, except for when you're twenty-six feet wide with an eight-foot on either side gives you basically eighteen feet, you're two foot short, number one. And number two, my concern is, and this can all be on one ABC question, okay, is if the HOA and the community are going to, and if it's not an officer that's in charge of this, I'm talking a previous police officer or somebody, and you've got them hashed, I've got that marked on down in another page, who's going to keep that delivery truck that one of our present presenters brought up, the Amazons and the others, and then those people that are bringing Uber and dropping food off, and they park anywhere. I mean, they just pull up, get out of their car, and walk up bringing you a hamburger and a truck's coming in. I'm very concerned because of our previous legislation that an HOA is not, is it going to turn a blind eye? So Tom and my colleagues, how do we keep people from losing their life with a fire entrance that may or may not be blocked? Because all you're doing is hashing it, you're not actually putting up physical barriers to keep people off of it, they're just hashed. And I know that maybe meet the requirement, but it doesn't change the fact that there's possible life issues.
That's correct. I think it's a fair question to ask, and that's one one we've spent so much time working with the fire marshal. And one of the comments that came out of it was the concern on our widths, even on the private streets. And in those proposed sections, we had ten-foot drive lanes with the parallel parking beyond that to hit your total width you're talking about. And one of the comments that we worked through with Daniel Cowan was he wanted eleven-foot widths on those drive lanes to make sure it was above the twenty-foot width as a minimum requirement for that. And I don't want...
That'd be twenty-two then.
That's what we worked through the process, twenty-two for the drive area. And to answer your question about how do you stop delivery trucks from blocking roadways? Well, you create opportunities for them to pull out of those drivable roadways, and those opportunities are throughout the development. One with the parallel on-street parking, one with the parking locations at the civic spaces, and one with the multiple access points to the different locations.
This UT football game you're going to win?
Mm-hmm.
We just talked about...
I hope so.
I'm not a fan, I'm just saying.
Understood.
Regardless, the twenty-five people want to come to the house and watch this and eat popcorn or whatever they're going to eat, all right?
Yes, sir.
Where do they park?
We have more parking than you'll have in any development for them to park. It's parallel in some sections on both sides of the road, it's parallel in some road sections on one side of the road, and then there's additional parking spots at each of those civic locations.
So you've addressed that concern.
Yes, sir.
For folks to visit and grandpas.
Fully, as well as having garage, driveways, everything normal that you have in a standard Wilson County development.
Excellent. Well, the parallel parking, as Tom said, we didn't have a whole lot of, so it was a concern. On page six dot two, I'm almost done for my colleagues here, they did not, the topo folk didn't include, and it may be your office that just decided not to, that show the properties, lots twelve through twenty-three that exist now, I think I got that number right, hold on. Yeah, twenty-three. They don't show the elevations, so that was my concern with regard to what these folks were bringing up, is there's a hill, let me grab this dude here again, there's a hill up a notch, right there. And if you look at the elevations, of course, it rises up and then comes above these homes here, and you've said you're going to keep everything on the other side of the ridge, so to speak, that are above that. But when you look at these elevations, they're showing five-nineties, some six-hundreds, et cetera, and then how do we keep, and it's something concerning design, I'm making it a point for just record, that there's probably a wash coming from that hillside down to these properties, and I don't know how many people are here that live there.
None, as we met with Tom.
Yes, sir. And then on into your new development across the road, that they're already experiencing rain, et cetera, on one of these, that go across the road and then into where your retention area is, is there any plan to make sure that can go around into your detention area, ensure, I know you're going to collect the new properties, but that rain has come off the hillside above, if I read the topo right?
Currently, and I'd have to dig in, the construction drawings, when we get to that point, will specifically address those concerns, but at a high level right now, when meeting with those neighbors that you're referencing there who are not here in attendance, there is a ridgeline at the back of those lots, and they felt like how the plan was laid out, that that ridgeline would be a good opportunity to keep development away from them.
Like a natural berm.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Excellent.
So the natural drainage way, if it is not being developed, we would not expect to change it at all.
Well, what we don't want to see, I don't, and this happens all the time, people come back and say, you built this, and now I've got a lake in my backyard. I don't want to revisit that, so...
And that's why the construction document level will work through staff and their comments.
Because you really did a great job with the fire lanes and things that you drew in here, I really appreciated that. But I really, for the community, because that's what they've got us on the board for is to consider, don't allow the lake to develop with, on people that are already living there. That's the whole point.
And we feel like that layout that you see right there addresses that comment pretty particularly.
And after Tom described what your drainage is and your watershed, you know, I tend to agree. On page seven-three, my last comment is that lane I talked about for the hash mark for the fire lane, and it kind of got a notch there where the truck has to go around. So I'm just hoping whoever's in charge of that HOA, and I guess you could do that through provisional documentation, will ensure that that allows, I would hate anybody to get hurt because of a delay.
Yeah, that specific notch is going to be located every fire hydrant. One of the comments that we heard from fire marshal when we addressed is even where there's parallel parking, we're going to be hatching out two spots, which has to be, I believe, twenty-foot minimum length at each fire hydrant, which will be no parking for a fire hydrant, fire truck built and set up.
Well, that's all the questions I got, except make this bigger next time, if you can, or whoever printed this.
Yes, sir.
But I've got a method, so it's good. Thank you, sir.
For your comments. I'll have Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith.
We do have larger copies in the office if you ever need to come see.
I will, I will, definitely.
I just want to ask him one or two questions. He was talking about the big trucks coming in Bates Road. You've got four ways you can come to Bates Road. Coldstream, on down, on Run Market, and turn right just a few feet down now, Bates Road, because I live on the other side. Go on down in the front of where you go to my house, Craden Lane, you go to Bates Road, and on down now, on the, now, I'm not saying what's the main way you're coming in. Because you're calling where you're coming from, you go there, what's the, that, big trucks, concrete trucks, which way would y'all say they was coming in?
You know, that end user or end construction user, I've been in that business before, and if I tried to guess, I would guess wrong completely. But when you think about what makes sense, shortest distance to the site from the main road of Highway one oh nine would be Bates Road off one oh nine.
Right. But in front of Craden Lane, man, that is dangerous. It's hard for me to get in, get out, the other side, get in, get out. I know y'all don't, can't put no light there, can you?
No, sir.
But that's all I wanted.
Yes, sir. And we felt traffic was very important when you're talking about a development like this, and that's why we worked real closely with the road commissioner's office.
If they're coming from the south to get there, construction traffic-wise, I would think Bates Road might be an option because it's a right end off of Highway one oh nine. If they're coming from the north, then they're probably going to go, now I'm just using a little bit of logic here, they're going to go down to the red light at Academy to cross traffic.
Right, go straight as well.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions from our board?
Just a matter of whether they're getting the rock.
Yes, sir, Mr. Empero. Just clarifying, so, been two or three comments about the road. Y'all have been to the road commission.
Yes, sir.
And they've told you, we'll get this into the minutes, that this is one of the best developments they've seen, and they're...
Traffic studies.
Traffic study.
Yes, sir.
And they're good with this, and they meet all the road requirements.
Yes, and then they'll review it further at the time of construction document level too.
Mr. Ash, where they don't meet the road requirements, they're proposing to put it on the private road network, so, and I think that's why the road commission may very well have given them a positive indication.
And I can give you a copy of exactly what we agreed to a few moments.
They'll have to review it again before...
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Any other questions from our board?
No, sir.
Thank y'all for this consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the rezoning.
We have a motion for Mr. Thompson to approve the rezoning. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Turner. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I've got to count, one clarification of the variance request.
Tom, we have typically done the variance request as independently, same as what we were doing here.
Yeah, so this will be the rezoning, and then you're going to go through the variance request?
We have typically done.
That's fine. I think that Georgia would prefer that.[1555.51][1555.51](laughter)
Yes, ma'am. Okay, okay. That passes unanimously, and that will go to the county commission for their approval, I assume, in November.
And that does include your commitment to widen Estes, correct?
Yes, sir.
At Estes and, what'd you say, Bates and Academy?
Academy.
Academy and Bradshaw, not Bates.
Okay. Tom, can we go through those one by one?
Yes, sir.
The ones that, he's asking for a variance.
They're not, they're not proposing access to Northwest Williams, are you? Do you wish to address that question about Northwest Williams? They're saying that Northwest Williams is Bates.
The right-of-way that we're accessing and connecting to is Bates Road right-of-way.
Which is right here.
That's correct. Northwest Williams is further.
And then Estes down here.
That's correct.
I just want all the [inaudible].
Yeah, the road commission will delineate a construction entrance once it gets into subdivision development, but beyond that, I can't, I can't really answer your question today. Yeah. Okay, are you ready for the variance?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. I can't answer that in short, so. The applicants are asking to allow ten-foot of separation in their neighborhood center district affecting seventy-six lots and twenty-foot of separation in their neighborhood general waterfront districts. Caleb, the seventy-six lots with ten-foot separation, where are they? Are they the orange ones?
They're on this page twenty-nine of your packet, the first picture there that shows the orange lots, yes, sir. And they are the orange ones referenced.
Here, here, here.
Yes, sir.
Every one of you have page twenty-nine printed out specifically in front of you that shows where these variances are occurring in the development.
Okay.
So they're asking for ten-foot separation or five-foot from the property line in those sections?
Overhang, Tom, is, how are we judging?
We judge that from the wall. We did change that a few years back.
Judge it from the wall, it's actually eight foot.
Yeah, with an E, that's correct.
Okay. Mr. Cowan?
And then...
I want to speak on that.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
They're also asking for 20-foot separation with the neighborhood commercial, and Caleb, those are the yellows?
That's not all the yellow ones, it's just a certain amount of them, but it's the second picture that you see, page 29. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which is the same as your cluster.
And that's for 96 lots that are affected.
Okay. Calvin, can we talk to you about this for a minute? Thank you, sir. What are, I know you've met with Mr. Thorburn, and apparently y'all have come to some understanding. What are your thoughts on these 10-foot of separation homes? Are they, do they have to be sprinkled?
The 10-foot separation probably needs to go, to be spoken to by the county building official.
I'm more worried about fire than I am county building official.
The county building official.
I understand.
That's an IBC-related thing, and I'm not IBC licensed, so I really can't talk on that.
I would anticipate, and I can't speak for him, but I would anticipate that he will require a certain rated wall. Fire-rated wall.
One-hour rated, two-hour rated? I'm, two-hour rated wall. Okay. And you've reviewed all these, and they've got everything as far as the.
Yeah, I haven't got.
Blanket statement.
I don't have a site plan yet, once I get a site plan, I can scale it, so I've only had concept drawings and things like that, but I've let them know what we need, we're going to have to have, you know, widths and hydrant separations and things like that, so.
But at this point, they've addressed all your concerns.
They've addressed my concerns, I just don't have a site plan yet.
I understand, I understand.
Chairman, a statement was made for clarity, two-hour rated wall on one or both of the adjacent properties beside each other.
The fire-rated wall per working through with codes and Fire Marshal, I believe, is on every building, is that correct? Every building, every wall.
That are 10 feet apart?
Yes, sir.
That would be typical.
And on the second, on the second part of this request, the 20-foot separation, I should clarify, is for the neighborhood general sections as well as the waterfront district proposed.
Okay.
I failed to mention the waterfront district.
Okay, do we have any questions from our board pertaining to this?
Which is up in the corner where Derek Dotson was asking questions about.
This variance request?
We're taking one at a time, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, this is one we're working on right here.
Nope.
Questions from our board, do we have a motion? Motion to approve from Ms. Weathers, do we have a second? Second from Mr. Woods, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? I will vote no, that motion will pass. I'm sorry, one, two, three, five, that motion will pass six to two. You ready to move on, Tom?
Yes, the next item is, the applicants are requesting to allow some lots to be as small as 5,500 square feet to allow flexibility within their design throughout their development. The PUD requirement states the minimum lot size must be half the parent district's size, which would permit a 20,000-square-foot lot in this instance. As it relates to that, this was an unintended consequence of us increasing the density, overall density criterion in R1 and A1, particularly R1. Before R1 was a 25,000-square-foot lot, half of that would have been 12,500 square feet, which still wouldn't have met this criterion, but now the minimum lot size, because of the language in the PUD section, says it's half the original lot size, which make it 20,000 square feet, and they're asking for 5,500-square-foot lots for.
Mr. Thorburn, oh, I'm sorry.
You may want to explain that, that may be something we missed.
Just to clarify, this is on page 28 of the variance, this is that second one down, and it specifically references the lot size criteria. The neighborhood center minimum size is 3,300 square feet, however, the average size that you see in the plan is a little under 5,200. The neighborhood general minimum is 5,500, however, the average size you see on the plan is 8,800.
The neighborhood center is 3,300 square feet.
That's correct, and the neighborhood edge is 12,000 minimum, but the average size is 37,000, six hundred and change, and the waterfront minimum request is 6,000, and the average size is over 10,000, so.
Tom, just for a little clarity there, if they were in, if they done a cluster provision as they've already been approved to do.
I think they could, we've never had a cluster go that small, in fairness, that I'm aware of at least in Wilson County, but I think they could, as long as they didn't, I think it's 12 units per acre, I think is what the cluster says is the maximum.
But we're only considering something this small because what we originally approved here on lot size, County Commission overturned it, so now.
Yeah.
Definition is half of that.
Yeah.
Can go here.
Right.
Well, the PUD standards say the minimum lot size, which references that. The cluster standards do not have a minimum lot size.
They have a minimum.
And we're putting it specific.
But the cluster, the way the cluster works is you take 25% off the top, and you get an estimate of how many lots you get, and that's what you get, you know.
How many, how many would be 5,500?
30, 3,300 is the neighborhood center district, which is the orange ones, however, they do average a little under 5,200 square feet, so the orange ones around the.
How many of those are there?
79? 79. And then the neighborhood general are the yellow ones, and then the.
96? 298.
Yeah, 298.
But you're only asking for a portion of them, a variance on a portion of those, correct?
Well, the way they're drawn, it would be that way, but what we're asking for is to set a minimum size criteria for each of these districts.
So neighborhood general would be what?
The minimum size criteria for neighborhood general would be 5,500 square feet.
Okay.
So we are asking for each one of those districts, setting a minimum standard for each of them.
Neighborhood edge is what?
Neighborhood edge is 12,000 minimum square feet.
How many of those are there?
48. 48.
Which actually meets the criteria before the lot.
Before the lot changed, yeah.
Lot changes size.
Okay, comes very close, within 500 square feet.
Yes, sir.
And then waterfront?
6,000 square feet, and there's 10 waterfront. And it's noted specifically right here.
Okay. Do we have any questions from our board pertaining to this variance request?
And just to, I know this may, numbers like that may sound different than what you're used to hearing, but to create what we're trying to create, to leave the open space that we're proposing, and to give variety within the development is why we're asking for that request for those specific sizes, which is common to the cluster.
But now, if I understood you correct, Caleb, the 5,500 square, average square-foot lots, and I can't remember what district you're calling that.
The center.
What section you're calling that, they all face out to open space?
Yes, sir, they're purposely placed facing towards those public open spaces.
All right, thank you.
And they're alley-loaded product.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, so I guess you would need to change the language from what we proposed in our comments to what he just outlined, and I've got notes of it, but I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yes, sir, and if that.
Okay. Y'all need to make a motion on that, I guess.
Well, any other questions from our board as it pertains to this zoning or variance request?
That's a general question for Caleb. Would you define this and your team as a 25-minute city that we've read so much about? Is this something that's falling under that auspice, or did that even enter your thought processes for these?
I'm not sure that's.
I don't think it's necessarily a city.
Not city, but community.
I'm Jessica Wilson, I'm with TPUDC, we're the planners on the project. I wouldn't necessarily say 25-minute city, but what we would call this is a traditional neighborhood development, where we're trying to create kind of that different lot sizes within the project, so you have kind of these centers that Caleb talked about for neighborhood center areas around central green spaces, and then the lots kind of get bigger as you go out from there, so we're really trying to create a pedestrian-friendly area with a lot of different kind of lot types here, too, with a lot of central open spaces.
I think that your definition of traditional is different than mine.
Possibly.
I don't see any neighborhoods, little stores or churches, but that's just, I'm old guy.
Yeah, no, on that point, too, following the R1 zoning, we wanted to be consistent with what we're allowed under the R1 PUD, which would not allow us to do kind of those neighborhood stores that would be kind of more central throughout it. You're welcome.
Lot changes in 30, 40 years, Mr. Renfro.
Yeah, maybe I've slipped too much.
I understand, trust me. Okay, I will call for a motion. A motion for Mr. Thompson to approve the lot size, minimum lot size that had been, the applicant has applied for, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Weathers, all those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed?
No.
That motion will pass seven to one. Okay, Tom?
The next item they're requesting variance from the standard PUD requirements is the applicants are asking to be allowed to construct five-foot sidewalks throughout the development as opposed to six-foot sidewalks, again, from staff's perspective, as long as it meets ADA-compatible requirements, Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, where we are generally okay with that.
Caleb, is, we, you felt confident you can make these sidewalks ADA-compliant at a five-foot rate?
Yes, sir.
Thought you could, just wanted to verify that, sir. Have any questions from our board as it pertains to this?
So 230-inch, yes, sir, 230-inch wheelchairs passing each other would take up the entire space of the five-foot width, correct?
Not sure about that math, but ADA does allow less than five feet, so we're above ADA.
And that meets our county requirement.
The currently where we require sidewalks, which is very seldom, because the Road Commission typically puts a kibosh on them in the right-of-way, it would be six foot wide.
Since they're a private road, taken care of, this is kind of.
This is the HOA's responsibility.
To clarify, Tom, those subdivisions that are currently being built in the county, they're putting sidewalks beyond the right-of-way, they're putting them.
Yes.
Five feet wide.
Yeah, that would be on private property as handled by the HOA, it's not in the public right-of-way.
Any other questions as it pertains to this request? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion, Mr. Turner, to approve, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Noakes, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed?
No.
Who said, Renfro?
We still got eight people, that motion will pass seven to one.
The fourth item that they're asking for some variation on is the applicants are requesting to allow more than 50 lots on a private road, and again, this harkens back really to the sidewalk issue and the road width issues that you've already discussed. They're seeking to make part of their development private to allow them more flexibility with pedestrian circulation that status quo development would not allow. They're also, and it also affects the parallel parking requirement, because typically on a public road right-of-way, we would not allow parallel parking.
See, some of y'all have that on page 45 of this exhibit, it illustrates nodes, these nodes are specific as to where they would be placed for these monuments that the picture shows to illustrate that comment in regard to private communities and how they adhere to our variance request of up to 150 lots as opposed to 50 lots, and that's that harmonious entrance treatment that I was talking about.
How many lots are there in there, Caleb?
In each node?
In the section you're asking for the variance on?
We're asking it as just a blanket, a request to go to allow up to 150 lots behind each node as opposed to 50 lots.
Traditionally in Wilson County, that would have been a gate there, but they're asking not to put gates, they're just saying, we're indicating this is the private road section with these monuments.
Right. And you've probably seen this in subdivisions and maybe recognized or maybe not.
If you've been to Park City, Utah, they have something similar there, that they actually have signage that says this is a private road. And that way, they can dictate whether or not people can park there, because as you might imagine, Park City, for instance, is very popular during ski season, and they don't want visitors parking where the residents need to get.
Okay, any questions, other questions?
I agree with Gary, this is going to be an HOA nightmare, somebody, somewhere along the way.
I also have a question, Mr. Chairman. On page 45, this, the two nodes that are between, I'm guessing five and six, six and seven midpoint, has that become a public road, or is that just included in one of the nodes?
The nodes, so the public road.
Is this a public road here, sir?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The public road that goes through the development is this main road here that goes public to public.
So the nodes are sitting on it, the public road, but they're not the private road until they're behind it?
The monuments would be on the side of the right-of-way, outside the right-of-way that is directing towards the private roads, yes, sir.
So from the entrance all the way through to the other entrance, basically is the public road?
And then, I thought you had one going down to the Marina Development. Is that correct?
No.
No, we're just having.
Okay.
So, again, another question regarding that, that section I just talked about has properties that.
I believe you're talking about this section here?
Yes, sir, bound on that side.
Yes, sir.
That they're not on the private section, so are they still included in the HOA, and they do have parallel parking as well? So.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, these homes.
Yes, sir. Those in the curve.
Ask the question one more time.
They don't have parallel parking there is the question, I guess. I tried to find it in there, but again.
And they're not being HOA dues.
No, everyone's.
Everyone will be part of the HOA.
So they're included in the HOA, but not parallel parking.
Right, no parallel parking on the public roadway.
So that would be the curve, and then the next section down on the way out, both are all on the inside?
On this side, yes.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Who votes?
Have a motion for Mr. Noakes to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Woods, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed?
I'm an aye. Don't look at me.
Okay, that motion will pass unanimously.
Motion to adjourn.
One more, let's do one more. We have one more, Tom, correct?
Two more.
There's two, you talking about the Hardyboard?
Yeah, number five and six.
No, the next one I've got is the Hardyboard.
Hardyboard.
You're. Yeah. The vesting is not something needs a variance from it. So, but the next applicant request is that the applicants are requesting that Hardyboard-type concrete or composite-type siding be an approved material throughout this development to allow for differentiation in structures. The developers put in the master plan that vinyl will not be a permitted building material on any part of the residence within the development. The initial planning and development requirement for outlining building material was enacted to provide for differentiation of materials permitted while intending that acceptable materials under the PUD regulation would ensure more sustainable quality appearance and height and lifespan of the materials. So they're effectively just asking to use Hardyboard as a permissible material. Y'all have had this discussion on one other development.
We have.
And I believe it was a PUD that we had the discussion on, and I do not think you approved it on that one.
I'm not sure. Mr. Thorburn, I'm sorry, just a quick question. When you completely do away with Hardyboard, are you going to do your soffits and all in Hardyboard, by lemonade?
When we allow Hardyboard?
No. You say absolutely no vinyl, most soffits are vinyl.
Yeah, or dormers.
Or, well.
Some of those.
We do not do dormers.
Yeah, yeah, most soffits are traditionally vinyl, I'm just throwing that out there for you.
Yes, sir, I'm not sure how the code.
I would probably, just for flexibility, I would say with the exception of soffits and trim.
But we do not want dormers in vinyl option.
That was going to be my question.
Could you term it, could you term it to be any vertical surface, because our soffits are all horizontal by now. Could you term it to be any vertical surface?
I would probably say soffits and trim would be the easiest thing, because you may have some.
Little, little less area for.
You have some, you have some corner guards and things that could be vinyl, so.
Please.
I don't really have.
We have any questions for him on our, from our board? Do we have a motion?
Question to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Weathers, second by Mr. Ash, to approve, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That will also carry.
The last one we have is the applicant's request that the minimum square feet for outdoor living space per residence be amended to 300-foot from 600-foot for the 185 lots, or for 185 lots spread across the development. These are again being requested to provide for heightened differentiation in architectural features between houses. It should be noted that they're asking for this allowance only on a portion of the 435 lots.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Caleb, which, which were the 185?
Mr. Caleb, which, which were the hundred and eighty-five lots? Why do you want them on this and those particular lots?
Uh, the exhibit is shown on your, your pictures right there, page twenty-nine. It's the one on the right, right there in front of you, Chairman. That, that's the colored lots. So, all of the orange ones, it's right there on the right in front of you. All the orange ones are the neighborhood center, which are the smaller lots, and the yellow ones are a portion of the neighborhood general. It, it's really the, the conformity to the lot, how they are drawn in there to give alternative space allowances for those outdoor areas. You know, if you, if you throw a larger...
Outdoor area.
The orange ones are, but the, the yellow ones are what, probably on the, the smaller side of the general lots. Size of lot, size of outdoor space is basically what we're going after there, trying to make that conform.
Any other questions?
But page twenty-nine's illustration shows the lots that are affected that you hope to be able to use three hundred feet of private recreational space, right?
Yes.
Whether it be neighborhood general or neighborhood center.
Stuff, yeah.
All right.
So, in theory, it's twenty by fifteen, give or take, for the three hundred square foot?
Well, you, you get to allow the front patio and then the back, so it's broken up.
That's inclusive for both of them.
Yes.
Yeah, and the six hundred would have been two. That, it could have been an upper deck, a downstairs porch, and a back patio would have made up the six hundred square feet or back deck.
What it ends up doing on those smaller lots is they all look the same. Whenever you end up meeting that higher criteria versus the, the smaller criteria, it allows you to break them up and ma- make them look differential as you're going down through there. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Whoa.
Motion for Mr. Noakes to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion will carry seven to one.
Six to one. You down to eight?
Six. Six to one is seven.
I thought you said seven to one.
One, two, three, five, six, seven.
Mr. Turner.
Six to one, how about that, sir? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was close, wasn't I?
Yeah, you flip one anyway.
You got that Alabama game on you.
Yeah, 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 okay. Okay. I, I believe that does it for that particular case.
That concludes that one.
Sir?
That concludes that proposal.
Thank you all.
Mr. Thorpe, thank you.
I know it's a lot of information, I appreciate it.
Are you buying lunch for all of us?
Uh, happy, happy to.
The, uh...
We're all luck crackers.
Uh, the next challenge will be at the county commission.
Yes, sir.
And there will be a public hearing there for anyone still, that still has concerns or questions.
All right, Tom, we're, you're looking for a land use amendment on Sparta Pike?
Give me just a second, sir.
Wilson County.
Chris, is this Malone back? Is it Tom Breschek? I didn't realize.
No, that's cool. I just need these. Everything else I'll use.
Are we ready?
Want a copy of these notes I made?
You're welcome. Are we ready to proceed with the next rezoning request and land use plan amendment?
As best as we're gonna be, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna handle these together. I'm gonna just read, read through both of them. On the land use plan amendment, application has been made by Austin Holtgrove requesting a land use plan amendment from a low-density residential area to a general commercial area. The property is located at sixteen fifteen Sparta Pike and is loc- is referenced as Wilson County Property Map eighty-two parcel one hundred point six. Property contains approximately two point two-one acres. The Wilson County Growth Plan nor the Land Use Plan has any direction for this area to be, be commercial and is currently a rural area featuring low-density residential development under the Land Use Plan. With the above facts stated, there's no direction that would indicate support for rezoning to a C-two general commercial zoning district in this portion of the county. With few exceptions, the Planning Commission and County Commission have otherwise established a pattern for maintaining the area's residential zoning design, designation. Staff recommends denial.
Tom, how far out of city limits is this?
It's not far at all. It's just below Mill Road, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The other side of the road is actually within Lebanon's UGB, but everything from south of Poplar Hill, I believe.
Is it, it's Poplar Hill, not Mill Road?
Well, Mill Road is directly to the north of this.
Yeah, okay.
And, but on the east side of Sparta Pike, everything south of Poplar Hill is still county jurisdiction. If you cross over Sparta Pike, everything is in Lebanon's UGB.
So, on this side is Lebanon.
Very, very area, but this is complete county, does not have any city regulations.
Right.
Across the road, what is the zone, part of the city?
Well, it's still in the county.
It's still in the county.
But under their group.
It's, it's, it's still in the county, it's still the same zoning as this, which is A-one.
Lebanon, James, Sun directions for crossing.
That would be my question. If you know.
I believe most of that that backs up to the railroad tracks is commercial slash industrial with railroad access.
Okay, thank you. You represent this case, sir?
What, do you want me to go and proceed with the rezoning comments or you wanna?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry.
Okay. The applicant, Austin Holtgrove, again, is requesting the rezoning from C-two, from A-one to C-two on the two point two-one acres, references map eighty-two parcel one hundred point six. The county land use plan provides direction to allow low-intensity commercial within four hundred feet of any major intersection where average daily traffic approaches ten thousand cars a day on the primary roadway and approaches three thousand cars a day on a nearby intersecting road. This provision of the land use plan has been informally referred to as a busy corner provision that outlines the ability to provide for neighborhood-scale goods and services. This particular request, however, is not in close proximity to what we would classify as the nearest busy corner intersection, with the majority of the surrounding properties being classified as R-one rural residential zoning. County Growth Plan nor the county land use plan has any direction for this area to be zoned commercially and is currently called out as a rural area featuring low-density residential development in the land use plan and the growth plan. With the above facts stated, there's no direction that would indicate support for rezoning to a C-two general commercial zone district in this portion of the county. With few exceptions, the Planning Commission and County Commission have otherwise established a pattern for maintaining the area's residential zoning designation. One thing I'm told is that this property may have some septic limitations, just for what it's worth.
Okay.
And there's floodplain on it as well.
You wanna continue, Tom?
I'm done. Did I wanna read half of it? I'm getting tired, I'm sorry.
Wilson County Planning Commission.
Uh...
Page five.
Oh, staff recommends denial of the request in its current format. Should the county planning commission, the county commission ultimately decide to approve the request for rezoning, a site plan will be required at the time the property is proposed for development under commercial zoning, and all commercial requirements in current, including permitting, paving, landscaping, building material, and public sewer provisions would apply to the property unless variances are granted. Staff has made copies of the rezoning request available to emergency services. The proposed rezoning falls within the Maddox Simpson Weema Station's five-mile ISO response zone for fire and emergency services. The county stormwater department has requested that the applicant, planning commission, and other interested parties be put on notice that the presence of sinkholes, caves, and wetlands, and streams, and land areas that are extremely flat marshy or steep may affect the further development of the tract. As an additional point of information, this rezoning request does appear to be near a century farm known as the Dramoland Farm at twenty-six forty Sparta Pike, based on the information provided to the county planning department. We do have two letters of opposition.
Yep, one of each. One for and one against.
One for and one against, okay. The Wilson County, one of them is from Chris McCray, uh, and he believes that the storage facility would be a good idea. And the other is from, uh, and he lives, well, I'm not gonna tell you where he lives, but it's on the letter. And, uh, the other one is from Dee Makin, Donna Makin, and she is a resident and owner of the property near the Sparta Pike rezoning request and is out of town today but is not in favor of the rezoning to commercial as it sets the precedent for future development on small acreage, commercial development, and if the property had a larger land base for drainage of sewer water, her decision might be different. So, she's concerned about the septic issues and the drainage coming from the property. I think she lives back a little bit behind it. And I'll pass those down for y'alls perusal.
You did note in your, in your, that a significant portion of this property was in a flood zone?
I believe so. Uh, the, the half-front of it.
Is it?
It's not shown on the...
You don't have the flood map?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Austin Holtgrove. Um, not a big public speaker, so I wrote this all down and I'm just gonna read it if that's all right.
I'm sorry.
Um, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, thank you for taking the time to hear me. I know that last one was pretty long. I wasn't expecting that, but, um, just a little bit about myself. Local Wilson County resident. I've lived off the two thirty-nine exit Sparta Pike for the better part of twenty-seven years. One of the big things I hear from residents in that area is there's no access to drive-through restaurants. You know, they're coming home from work, they're going to work, um, and there's nowhere to go. You know, we've got a couple of sit-down places, but most people don't wanna get off at the South Cumberland exit and get, get food. So, uh, they'd love to have some sort of option for that. Uh, as for my property at sixteen fifteen Sparta Pike, I believe this is the perfect location for this to serve, serve the community better with a local drive-through restaurant. This property is located one mile from Interstate forty. Uh, we have roughly eleven thousand vehicles that travel Sparta Pike each day, so we're reaching the threshold of ten thousand for a commercial development. There are currently six commercial properties located within a half-mile of my property. Five of those are in the county. Uh, one of them, the mentioned cubes, uh, three hundred acres, several million square feet worth of, uh, industrial warehousing that is directly across the street behind the railroad tracks. Uh, and the entrance to that is, is less than half a mile down the road from my property. Finally, I'll leave you with a little bit about my restaurant, what I'm trying to rezone for. I have a food trailer currently that moves around to bit-large events around town. We were at the Wilson County Fair. You may have seen us or not. Um, and we're currently working on a location at the Lebanon Square. Uh, hopefully be opening in the next couple of weeks. It's called Earl's Cafe. Uh, we're a southern coffee shop, uh, so we'd be open for the morning traffic of, of travelers looking for coffee, breakfast, as well as we offer meet and three options for lunch and dinner on people going to lunch or on their way home. Uh, Earl's Cafe, my middle name, my father's middle name, my son's middle name, and my grandfather's first name is all Earl. Uh, that's where that comes from. Anyway, I would greatly appreciate your approval for this. I think it would be a added benefit to the area. Um, like I said, it's a large traveled area. There are other commercial properties in the area, and, uh, I, I know many people that would appreciate a, you know, fast-paced local restaurant option. Thank you.
If you were to get this rezoning, what kind of sewer options do you have?
Uh, currently, there's been a septic plan approved, um, and it, I haven't got into actual plan of the actual project yet, um, but for residential purposes, there was a septic permit approved. Um, so whatever the county would require, I would work through that process at that time.
If that were the case, Tom, even with an approved septic system, he would have to have a variance to use it for commercial.
That's true.
From...
That is correct.
Correct?
Yes.
With all the traps and the grease catchers and all this stuff.
Absolutely. You don't need ground for that, but you need it for the septic, for sure, or any kind of step system. So, thank you, sir. Anyone here, else here wishing to speak on this case?
I'll pass my phone down. I'll take a snapshot of the floodplain.
Oh, thank you. We have any questions from our board?
Yes, sir. Um, just a comment or two, basically. Again, we go back to the word we started with at the beginning of this meeting was precedent, and then at some point at the end of the year, folks may get their way and this gets rezoned for plant, land use, but right now it isn't. And it may be a little bit premature to do this, not saying it might change in the future, but, you know, plans are in place for a reason. So, uh, I like the idea. I'm hungry. I wouldn't mind going to his restaurant right now, but, um, I don't know that I can look at that, overlook the land use plan, so that would be my comment, Mr. Chairman.
If I could ask, this letter references, uh, references a storage facility, not a restaurant? I, I don't know.
There had been discussion with the applicant about storage facilities on the property on his, on his rezoning request. It states coffee shop, I believe.
Okay.
I will just address that. I am a local, small business owner, and if you are, you have many ideas. So, when I bought the property, I didn't quite know what I wanted to do with it. That's one of the plans I'd like to do at some point, uh, somewhere. Uh, but with my coffee shop flourishing, like I said, opening on the square, and then the food trailer, uh, and the large need I see for this amenity in that area, that's the direction I'm wanting to go with this property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from our board? Uh, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a mo- motion to approve from Mr. Woods. Do we have a second?
We have a question. Are you doing both the land use plan amendment and the rezoning by default? You are.
We presented them together, so as long as you're okay with that. Are you okay with that, Mr. Woods?
Mm-hmm.
Is that proper protocol here? We typically haven't done that, but...
So, Mr. Woods voted to approve it or motion to approve it?
Woods made a motion to approve.
Anybody a second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed?
No.
No. Mr. Ash is a no. Mr. Renfro is a no.
I'm a no.
Eric is a no.
He's got an A.
That, yeah.
We lost, oh.
And we only have one, two, three, four, five.
I do have a question.
This vote's taken.
I'm s...
I'm sorry, boy.
Okay. Uh, we have seven votes and we have three no's. We have seven votes, and we have three noes. That motion will fail due to a majority, four to three, and you do have the right to appeal that to the county commission.
Can we get a clarification on the vote? It was a little.
You have to have six votes to it.
Right, I just, I heard it's some a's, and then there was a question. Can we get a confirmation?
So I have, I'll list them. There are seven of them. I have a, the motion was made by Woods, the second by Commissioner Weathers, and Ash, Thompson, and Renfro voted no. The a's were Weathers, Jones, Woods, and Noakes. And you have to have six, six votes of the entire quorum to prevail.
You were a nay?
Yes, sir. No, I was not a nay, I was a a.
Yet, Weathers, Jones, Woods, and Noakes were an, were an a.
And Mr. Noakes, you were?
Renfro at the end.
I thought I heard Mr.
No, I said Weathers is an a.
Can we get a confirmation from Mr.?
Weathers, Jones, Woods.
I thought I heard it was a a, I just wanted.
He is an a. Mr. Renfro was the no at the end.
So just to make sure, you were an a, you were an a, you were an a, and Mr. Woods was an a. That would be four.
Four.
A's to three noes.
That's correct, but you have to have six a's to.
You have to have a majority of the full quorum.
We made two bail.
And you've lost several of the members.
We made three bail odds.
But you do have a right to appeal that to county commission.
Okay.
They have ultimate jurisdiction over rezonings.
All right, sorry, I was confused on that, didn't realize.
I understand.
All right. And Mr. Ash, you had a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ash.
I didn't interrupt you. I had a question.
Please.
So as we do our land use plan, he, his property may very well come in compliant for the land.
Did you hear that, sir?
He could.
Is that not right?
We're in the middle of a land use plan update.
He's really not out of the, not in the land use plan until we redo our land use plan, then he may be in it.
Potentially.
Which is in the process, so it could pretty soon.
Okay. And just to clarify, you said I had 10 days to appeal to the county commission?
That is correct, and you would do that through the planner's office?
You would do that in writing to us? I would suggest that you might want to reach out to your county commissioner and ask them if they're supportive of your request.
Okay. Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you all again, and appreciate your time.
To Mr. Ash's point, we are in the middle of a land use plan update, and we're going to have several opportunities for public input. We have already had those. Got a meeting coming up October 29th at Cumberland University, Assembly Hall, between 5:30 and 7:30. We also have meetings at various schools, either four or five schools across the county in November, that we'll be sending out an announcement pretty shortly about, that might be.
It would be favorable to him.
It could be.
I see this land use plan going that this is not the end of the road.
Yes, that would be some, it won't be something immediate, but it could, you could at least provide input that you would like to see this area go commercial, and they can take it under consideration, or we can. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, Tom, we're now ready for site plans and plots.
Yes, sir. The site plan, the first site plan we have is for Color Burst at Wilson County, and in parentheses, Color Blast. This is located at 75 Cattleford Pike. It was one lot, and they have withdrawn that request. The next site plan is the Diamond Plastics sign.
Don't we need to address these as we go, Tom?
Not the withdrawal.
Not the withdrawal, you don't.
Oh, okay.
They're still developing that, by the way, just for informational purposes. They just didn't, they didn't need to come and get additional site plan approval, that they thought they did. The next item is Diamond Plastics Sign Site Plan at 720 Northern Road. This is the old Diamond Plastics Plant Facility off Northern Road. They're, want to put a sign up. Boza ca, the Boza case number will need to be indicated on the title page before we can stamp the plans approved, and with that, we recommend approval. The Board of Zoning Appeals approved this yesterday, this signed site plan variance.
Anyone here to represent this case today? Yes, sir. Yes, please come forward and state your name for the record. I'm sorry.
My name is Jim Reynolds on the side of Rama, the proposed contractor for the sign, if it's approved.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Ms. Weathers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. All those in favor vote aye. Those opposed? Motion will carry. We're now ready for the site plan for the Sam Kings Market.
Yes, this is 1400 Sparta Pike, map 82, parcel 127, and with technical, with technical corrections, staff can recommend approval. The landscape plan will be required before the site plan can be stamped approved.
Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion, Mr. Noakes, to approve. Subject staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Weathers. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion will carry. The final for Harbor, Sunset Harbor subdivision?
Yes, this is on Hidden Harbor Drive, consisting of 50 lots, and references map 50, parcel 173. Is this the, is this the one that we need to defer?
Yes.
Yes.
They've got, we need to request defer on this one because they've got some outstanding
issues they need to work out with stormwater.
They want to be put on the November.
They would like to be put on the November agenda.
Okay. Do we have anyone here representing this today? Okay.
So move to defer.
We have a motion to defer from Mr. Renfro, second from Mr. Thompson. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That will be deferred till November. And now we're ready for the preliminary for the Cedar Hall subdivision.
This is on Murphysboro Road and Jennings Pond Road, just north of the intersection with Jennings Pond Road on the east side. It's referenced currently as map 142, parcel 1503, and they're proposing 24 lots. This is a dead end, the dead end street length is too long, and so a variance would be, would be needed on the maximum length of the dead end street. If the variance is granted, with minor, minor technical corrections, staff can recommend approval.
That variance would come from Boza?
Yeah.
This is subdivision reg, so it would be y'all.
It would be us?
Yes.
Can you tell us how, how, how much too long is it?
I think it's a little.
1900 feet.
Too long?
1900 feet?
Two, yes. The requirement is 500 feet for a dead end street. This development approximately has 2,400 feet of road.
Wow.
It's all one.
It's about a half mile back. They do have two stub outs to, but.
Now, this is our.
I'm sorry.
Whoops.
Next plan.
Oh, yeah. Does that look better?
There we go. They have a stub out?
Yeah.
No, they don't. They chose not to. Okay. We discussed it, but they chose not to. All right.
Let's see what they got to say, Tom, okay?
Good afternoon, Rob Olton, SEC. Mr. Trout is the developer of the property on that side. The length of the roadway itself from center line of 231 to the end of the eastern side of the property is roughly about 2,267 feet. So we're a little bit longer than, you know, so the 500 foot is what the maximums are in support of request in the variance. This property being as dictated as it is, and we're trying to stay with the A1 zoning with two acre greater lots, we're looking at this as being a high-end develop with $1 million plus homes on it, with preserving as many as, by doing this on this two acre lots, we're going to preserve as much of the vegetation as possible. So more or less, we'll be coming in and, you know, clearing for the roadway, the infrastructure and utilities along the roadway, and then each lot will be sold, and then individual homes we've built on this. So we see this as a high-end development on that side, so that's why we're asking for, based on the way the configuration of the property is today, that we really don't have eye venues to get to other places on this. So we're looking at this as being a stub street to adjacent properties to the east at some point in time in the future. So that's where you see the cul-de-sac at the far eastern end. So we do exceed the 500-foot threshold that you guys have, but we have found other examples within the county that exceed that minimum length on that side. To date on that side, I can state off three if you'd like, but the county does have roads that do exceed the 500-foot dead end length and being.
We do have some that set that, that, there is a precedent for it, is what he's saying. But Jennings Pond Road is right here, just so you're aware. There's a major creek crossing that, that really it's probably ideal that they not access, for the most part, Jennings Pond Road. I believe down in here, they do have.
You know, to your left, to your cursor right there, we do have, in our talks, a T-dot based on 231 and the intersection with Jennings Pond Road. Those three lots you see that face onto the 231, there's actually an access easement that comes off of Jennings Pond Road, so right there to the left of the cursor, to the left, Tom, right there. You can see that's in a common access easement and driveway for those three lots, because T-dot would not allow us access driveways to 231. So those three lots will have to work through a common access easement back to Jennings Pond to get to that intersection at 231 to get out of their properties on that side. So that's because of that drainage way that goes through, they were kind of encumbered with that frontage along there, and also T-dot standards encumber that as well. So those three lots will be via a common access driveway.
In our conversation with Mr. Summer, with T-dot, you, you also were talking.
Correct.
Common access easement to keep from these having.
Yes, so those do.
There's already one dedicated driveway for an existing home, but.
Yes, but we'll be, we'll be taking that existing driveway offline per T-dot, and that driveway with that from the existing home will stay, and that driveway will then come into the subdivision road. And then on the backside, as Tom is pointing out right there, that second lot on the northern end of the property will have an access eas, access driveway back to the subdivision roadway that comes through the middle of the property.
What is the additional hatch out circular?
Those are areas we've delineated as areas of interest. Those are areas that maybe, you know, may be a sinkhole or something like that on that side, but being two acre lots, we're going to build around those, so home sites will not be intrusive of those. That's why we wanted to indicate those on the plan, just to make certain that as we go through the development process, and anybody who purchases a lot, that those are areas to be, you know, looked at in the future.
There's 11 circles on there, is that right? And I'm real familiar with that area.
The one on lot six, you could put a house in it and not know it's there.
I'm sorry, Chris, you said?
That sinkhole on lot six, right, you could build a house at the bottom of it and not see it.
I know where it's at, oh, yeah, that one.
How big that, that?
And this is serviced by a step system, sir?
Yes, sir. So you can see in the middle, top middle section right there is a step system lot, so we're working all 24 of these lots off a dedicated step system for sanitary sewer.
Is there water, Chris?
Oh, go ahead.
What was your question?
So has this been out to the road commission, too?
Yeah, it has, it's actually, this is the second time this has been before you. It came through as a preliminary, and then they addressed road and drainage plans, I believe with the road commission, about improvements to Jennings Pond, and that's where now they're back before you to change the plan to stay off of Jennings Pond.
They initially had lot fronted John Jennings Pond down here that they're.
That's narrow, narrow.
Tom, there is precedent in place to go four and a half times above?
I don't know about four and a half times, but I do know there's precedent for, for some lots that, or roads that have length, road lengths further than, more than 500 feet.
I did find two that exceeded 3,000 linear feet within the county today. One would be Dunaway Road, which is 3,200 linear feet, that has 24 lots on it. Chelsea Lane, which is off of Hickory Ridge Lane, is 3,000 linear feet with 30 lots on it. And then the previous, the project that came before you all at the beginning of the day, Califord, or what is the word, that, that little dead end street that was, had the dead end that was going towards that.
Chafford Place.
Chafford, yes, Chafford Place. That was 1,450 feet with 23 lots on it. So there's been some precedent in regards to the county. That stub, that cul-de-sac in the street could turn into a stub the future, just like when we talked about, you know, the, the last one.
I would say, I would submit Chafford is.
Chafford has an intersection in it.
Yeah, Chafford does have an intersection, but I would submit it's a, it's a close approximation. Dunaway Road's a little bit iffy, I mean, it was an existing road that got developed.
Before the zoning, or.
Yeah.
Example, I can think of, I'm having the Kimberly Drive off Stewart's Ferry. That is a one, and that, that was probably roughly the same distance as this, and that was 30 something homes off of, probably.
Yeah.
Again, this is a street that could potentially make connections to those adjacent properties to the east in the future, so that's why that's cul-de-sac there temporarily, and if something would happen to develop on those properties east, it could be extended and connected, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any further questions from our board?
Mr. Chairman, I got some questions, but they're new guy questions, so you have to bear with me here. So we got a third of a mile fundamentally here, and there's a reason that we limited this to 500, so I'm going to refer to you, Mr. Chairman, and Tom. Why did we have a limit?
Well, the limit was here before I got here, but I suspect it was for emergency services purposes.
That's what I was getting to. Emergency services. So they're, they don't like this length because of the length of travel, or because of turnaround, or?
There's no ability to turn around.
There's, there's no, there's no ability to turn around on one lane of the road. There's also, if there's.
Well, it'd be two lanes, but there's no intersection for them to make a three-point turn.
I understand.
And if there's, and if there's a wreck at the front intersection, there's no other way to get there, or if there's a heart attack in the back of the neighborhood.
That's a big deal.
There's, there's parts of that road ain't eight, 10 foot wide.
Now, this is a newly proposed road, but you're talking about Jennings Pond.
I see what it's bumping into and.
Yeah.
And is this one of those subdivisions like we looked at before, where all the mailboxes are up front, so people got to travel?
They, they will have to have a mail kiosk.
Unless they get a variance from it.
Right.
They will be required to do that for the zone subdivision regulations.
So I'm hearing that, again, new guy question, that it was for safety, you think?
I believe so, yes.
Emergency vehicle safety. That's all the questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Who to approve?
Have a motion to approve from Mr. Noakes. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Weathers. All those in favor vote aye. Wait a minute, if you would, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Two, one, two, oh, well, three.
Three.
All those opposed, please raise your right hand. That motion, the motion to approve will fail by a vote of four to three.
You are on a time clock for a plat, so there has to be an approved motion. It doesn't have to be made today, you do have 60 days if you wish to defer it and bring it back. But you are on a time clock. If you do not make a decision, it is automatically approved, and they'll proceed to find a plat.
So you can make another motion?
You make another motion, or you can defer it to where you have more members and re-vote on it, but you have to make a decision.
I'll make the motion.
That motion.
I will make a motion, we defer this to the next meeting, where we have more commissioners available to get a form. That will give, that will certainly give y'all a more adequate body to deal with.
Did you make a motion?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson.